Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the February 7th, 2023 Cobb County Planning Commission Public Hearing. I'm Michael Hughes. Our chair, regular chairman Stephen Wald is a little under the weather this morning and won't be here, so I'll be filling in on his behalf. We are expecting one additional, well, she is walking in the door as we speak. So we are going to get underway. Our pastor here who would normally provide our invocation is not here. I'd like to recommend that we just take a few moments of silence and then we will have the pledge.
Thank you. Now I will stand up. With that, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. With that, I turn it over to staff to walk us through how the public hearing will be conducted this morning. Thank you.
Thank you. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in numerical order. When we call the case, we would ask that the applicant please stand up and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After that, we're going to call to see if anyone here is opposed to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand up and raise their hand so they can be counted for the record. After recognizing the applicant and any opposition, both parties will be asked to come forward to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first and the applicant, the applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time. So you want to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. Additionally, if there's more than one person wishing to speak on a case, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about because each side gets 10 minutes total, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the matter at hand. There are two cases on today's printed agenda which have been withdrawn without prejudice, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resoning case Z71 of 2022, Hamilton Homes Holdings LLC. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Second case is SLEP 1 of 2023, Tower Broughton. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have been either held or continued, and these cases will not be heard today. Resoning case Z55 of 2022, Kenneth B. Clary. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z55 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z60 of 2022, Branch Acquisition Company LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z60 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z65 of 2022, Dray Pack Investments LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z60, pardon me. Resoning case Z65 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z67 of 2022, SMB Investments Incorporated. This case was continued by the plant, by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z67 of 2022 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z81 of 2022, Prime Properties 9 LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearings. So Z81 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z2 of 2023, SWI Investments LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z2 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z3 of 2023, Cynthia Jones and Cynthia and Cindy Nash Enterprises LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z3 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resoning case Z4 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So Z4 of 2023 will not be heard today. And finally, SLEP 2 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the March 7th, 2023 Planning Commission zoning hearing. So SLEP 2 of 2023 will not be heard today. I would like to ask the people in today's audience, if you have a cellphone, please put your cellphones on mute. When the phones ring, they do interfere, you know, interfere at the broadcast and presentations. Any person wishing to speak before the Board of Commissioners must file a campaign contribution disclosure statement if they made a campaign contribution in the last two years of $250 or more to a current member of the Board of Commissioners. And lastly, I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, the information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. And with that, Mr. Vice Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Planning Commission zoning hearing consent agenda, February 7th, 2023. First case on consent is resoning case Z77 of 2022, Lidl U.S. Operations LLC, Deborah Pyburn. Request rezoning from NS and CRC to CRC for a grocery store in landlots at 565 and 566 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Piedmont Road and on the west side of Canton Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of stipulations from Deborah Pyburn dated January 26, 2023. Site plan dated January 20, 2023, with the district commissioner approving minor changes. Number three, install an eight-foot landscape enhancement strip adjacent to Piedmont Road and Canton Road. That shown on the site plan dated January 20, 2023. Number four, adhere to Canton Road design guidelines. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. Number six, stormwater management comments and recommendations. Number seven, water and sewer comments and recommendations. And number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z77?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resoning case Z78 of 2022, Todd Woodruff. Request rezoning from NS, GC, and R20 to NRC for a car wash in landlots 157 and 204 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Chalif Road, on the east side of Canton Road, and at the terminus of Old Chaliford Road. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, letter of stipulations from Carol Brown dated January 23, 2023. Number two, site plan dated January 20, 2023, with the district commissioner approving minor changes. Number three, adherence to the Canton Road guidelines. Number four, dumpster enclosure to be constructed per county standards. Number five, signs must be permitted to the zoning division and must comply with county sign ordinance. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. Number seven, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number nine, water and sewer comments and recommendations. And number 10, site plan review comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z78?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. LUP 3, The Giving Gardens, Inc. Request a temporary land use permit to allow a community garden space, including animal husbandry, education, mobile food service unit, food sales, and intern housing in landlots 183 and 250 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Cooper Lake Road and on the east side of Waits Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no parking on the right-of-way. All customer and client parking must be on the adjacent paved church property parking lot. Number two, no exterior signs. Number three, no outside storage allowed. And number four, DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The LUP 3.
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed. The LUP 4, Garfield and Andrea McCook. Request a temporary land use permit for a personal care home in landlot 222 of the 20th District. The property is located on the south side of Stylesborough Road, west of Ballotina Lane. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, maximum of 12 residents. Number two, maintain turnaround capabilities of driveway so that vehicles can exit the property frontwards. Number three, no exterior signs. Number four, maintain all state and county required permits. Number five, maintain size of the lot as it currently exists. And number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Okay, let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The LUP 4. Let the record show there's no one opposed. And finally, LUP 5, Caitlin Costello. Request a temporary land use permit for a flower farm and sales in landlot 156 of the 1st District. The property is located on the north side of Sunset Trail, east of Bayless Drive. Staff recommends approval for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no sales from this location. Number two, no exterior signs. And number three, DOT comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The LUP 5. Let the record show there's no one opposed. And that completes the consent agenda, Mr. Chairman and Board.
Thank you, John. The vice chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted by staff.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, all those folks that were on consent agenda, you're free to leave. Just come back in two weeks for the Board of Commissioners' final decision. And moving into the continued and handled case agenda, first case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z72 of 2022, Brock Built Homes LLC. Request a rezoning from R30 to R20 LLC for a single-family subdivision in landlot 129 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Friendship Church Road, across from Wellesley Drive. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed? Resoning case Z72?
No.
Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Good morning. My name, for the record, my name is Parks, South of the Law Firm, I'm Samzak and Huff, and I represent Brock Built Homes in relation to this rezoning application before you this morning. Without any opposition, I'm going to go kind of quick and get to the discussion about the case because we had a hearing last time it was held for us to do some additional work on the case. Want to point out the subject property. It's on Friendship Church Road. It's a L-shaped piece of property that's on Friendship Church Road. For your reference, you can see to the north is an R20 zoning, an R20 subdivision. To the east is an R20 subdivision. To the south is an R20 subdivision. Subject property is owned R30. Our request is to go to an R20 and develop it as a conservation subdivision. For context, if you go further north, not much further than this map is Dallas Highway and the Avenue Shopping Center. To the east is Barrett Parkway, so it's meaningfully positioned with the schools, shopping, transportation corridors, and Friendship Church Roads is a arterial road. So one of the things we looked at is the adjacent subdivisions and subdivisions in the area. And you can see, as I come down from the north side, you've got Friendship Church Road, an R20 that's developed as a traditional R20 subdivision at 1.87 units per acre. Our site is shown next is going south at 1.56 units per acre. The subdivision to the east is 1.76 units per acre. The subdivision to the south is 1.66 units per acre. And then further south, you have a R15 neighborhood that is at 2.3 units per acre. And the reason why you've got those boxes shown there is that all those three subdivisions that I mentioned have floodplain on it. So you have to take the floodplain out to calculate the proper density, and that shows the amount of floodplain and why the densities are slightly different than what you look on the, on the site plans because it did not account for the floodplain, which is the county's way to calculate density. So you can see at 1.56 units per acre, we are actually at the lower end, the lowest density proposed subdivision in the area. This is an example of why we do conservation subdivisions and why they make sense. This is that community to the north. It's a traditional R20 subdivision. It's 12.83 acres. Our site's 14 acres, so almost the exact same size. It has 24 homes on it, density of 1.87 units per acre. And you can see ours has got 21 homes on it at 1.56 units per acre. But what I want you to notice is that every square inch of that site is a lot. It's a, you know, a yard that's maintained, no open space, no natural area whatsoever. And then you look at our site plan, and you can see why we do conservation layout. This is the 21 homes that we propose on our, on our layout, and it has a street with a cul-de-sac. The homes are, you know, positioned towards the front of the neighborhood, and then you can see the generous area in the back. Thirty-five percent of this site is going to remain tree. It will be a natural habitat. Further to the west, there's existing open space for another open space community. So you've got the congregation of a couple of different open space communities back there. So you're going to have a large open area with natural vegetation, natural wildlife. And so this is why I am always glad to do conservation subdivisions. The homes, Brock Built Homes, I want to mention, is a local home builder. They, it's a third-generation family business, building homes throughout metro Atlanta, and they've been in business for 20-plus years. And so they have a reputation and a history of building quality projects and quality, quality neighborhoods, and this is some examples. One of the things, too, I live in this area, so I'm very aware of what has developed. And we have had very little traditional family neighborhoods. A lot of senior developments have come in. This is a traditional family neighborhood. Wanted to show layout. If you did it in R30, in R20, that we did a conforming lot plan showing that, you know, theoretically you could get 26 lots on this. And so when you look at our layout, as we show here with our 22 homes, that's in fact, you know, has a better feel. It's what the market wants. This will provide homes for families that, that maybe grew up in the area and are trying to come back to the area to have their kids go to schools they went to. Your staff, your professional staff, went through the analysis and did some of the things that I did, pointing out to you. This is VLDR in the land use plan, which is up to two units per acre, so 1.56 units per acre. This is consistent with the land use plan. It's consistent with the surrounding zonings. So your professional staff looked at and recommended approval at one, at the 22 lots that we propose here with those conditions that we have, have listed in that area here. I have also submitted a letter. I wanted to go back to the site plan, just again emphasize the fact that, that what this does is create some common area, green space, that will be a natural habitat and meaningfully placed to be adjacent to other amenity areas or open space. I've also submitted a letter dated January 26, 2023, that details the conditions that we've agreed to. No more than 22 homes. They would all be for sale homes. We would comply with GDOT or Cobb DOT on our access points with deceleration lanes and miters, as they recommend. The conservation easement would be written into the covenants. They would have, we would have fencing that would demarcate the differentiation between our lots and the open space, and we would comply with all stormwater requirements. There is no floodplain on our property, unlike those others, adjacent subdivision. This is, we don't even have, but maybe just a little bit of a creek buffer on the very, very back. This is all very developable land. So we ask that you follow your professional staff recommendation for approval. And I think it is significant. Sometimes what you don't hear is more significant than what you do hear. And you've sat up on this board for many, for year or years, and you know that when you have a zoning in West Cobb and you don't have anyone show up, that's more telling than the fact, than people showing up. Because this is an area that has not seen any new subdivisions in a very long period of time. I think the general consensus is new residential in this area. There's not been anything from Dallas Highway on Friendship Church Road, from Dallas Highway all the way down to Villa Rickor Road. There hadn't been anything new in the last 20-something years. So a new subdivision, bringing in new price points, will do nothing but invigorate the existing homes in the area in terms of price points. So we ask that you follow your staff recommendation for approval. And at this point, I'll be glad to answer any specific questions you may have about the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. There was no opposition, correct? Okay. With that, this is in District 1. We'll turn it over to Commissioner Bellone to lead the discussion.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Peterson, let me just ask a question. We had reviewed a plan on this at 21 homes, and I was prepared to go forward with a motion on that. The applicant has now asked for 22. There being no opposition today, I assume because the applicant seeks 22, and if my motion or recommendation is received well today, that would be at 21. So that would apparently not be appropriate for the consent agenda as such?
The, the plan that's in the zoning analysis is the 22 lot plan, and that's the plan the staff reviewed and based their analysis on.
I understand. But assuming my motion is at 21, if that passes, that, then that would not be appropriate for the consent agenda and just...
Well, what you should probably do is, once you make your motion, it's just to verify with the applicant if they're okay with everything in your motion. If they're not okay with it, then it probably cannot go on consent.
Correct. Let me go ahead and cover that at this time. You, you're asking now for 22, correct?
Correct, yeah. And I misspoke in my presentation. I said 21 because I couldn't read my writing with my, with my glasses. But we've always had the 22 lots. I understand that you would like us to drop to 21 lots, and I can't agree to that, but obviously you can do it. And the reason why I can't agree to it is we have a contract, and if we, you know, negotiate down, then that kind of messes up some contractual terms.
I understand.
So if you make it 21, if you want to try to put on the consent agenda, it'd be up to us to pull it off.
Okay. Do you have a preference in that regard?
I would say if you, if you're going to make it at 21, if that's what passes, then ask it to be put on the consent agenda.
Okay. So you're, you're fine with consent agenda, and that'll be up between you and the current landowner to deal with?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Mr. Chairman, unless anyone else here has questions for the applicant, I'm prepared to go forward with the motion. My motion would be for approval of the request, but at 21 rather than 22 homes, with a net density of 1.55 units per acre or less. So those changes to page one of the letter of agreeable stipulations dated January 26, 2023 from the applicant. Additionally, add to the applicant stipulation number five as stated in that letter, no chain link fences allowed. Additionally, each of the following comments, this is subject to all staff and departmental comments and recommendations, including the additional comments provided by staff. An additional condition is that, apologize, additional condition would be that the mail kiosk must be located on commonly owned or HOA property, not on a lot, and that all lots must still be 13,000 square feet. An additional condition shall be that a distance of at least 22 feet shall be maintained between all houses on adjoining lots. An additional stipulation, having taken into account and met with some members of the community at a meeting together with the applicant, not less than 2% of the tract will be made a second open space area along Friendship Church Road, such area to include a berm of four feet in height, if possible, where such area abuts the lots nearest to Friendship Church Road. Developer to submit a landscaping, grading, and tree save plan to the district commissioner, prior to pulling a land disturbance permit with the district commissioner to have final approval over each such plan and the final building plans. That's my recommendation.
All right, we have a motion. We have a second.
Second.
All right. Motion, second.
Hey, Michael, was that our consent? Was he putting on our consent or no?
Clarify that.
Thank you for bringing that up. Yes, I apologize. Yes, was the answer to that question. The motion would conclude, place this on the consent agenda as the Board of Commissioners.
Okay.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call question. Motion passes 4-0.
Okay, next case on the agenda is LUP 21 of 2022. Roger Alexander. Request a temporary land use permit for vehicle parking in landlot 235 of the 16th District. The property is located on the west side of Healy Road, north of Myrtle Drive. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The LUP 21. Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Roger Alexander. I am here to request the permit to park a box truck on my property, and I'll kind of give some background as to why. So I am a filmmaker here in Atlanta. My company shoots movies, commercials, music videos for different companies, artists, and things like that. So in this company, I own a lot of the film gear that we use to shoot these projects. I'm not sure if any of you have heard. It's kind of been all over the news over the past year. But in Atlanta, in the Atlanta metro, excuse me, there has been a coordinated crime ring of thieves who have been breaking into studios, stealing... ring of thieves who have been breaking into studios, stealing hundreds of thousands, even millions of dollars worth of film gear, cameras, lighting gear, that sort of thing. Across the Atlanta metro, over this past year, 48 different companies have been hit by these thieves. Five of them are personal friends of mine. I've seen the damage that is done to their companies and the insurance claims they've had to go through. It's a huge mess, it's been all over the news. And these 48 companies have a meeting every month, and we discuss what happened during their break-in, certain things that we can do to protect the people who haven't been hit. I'm a part of this committee, and so me being owner of a lot of this gear, I'm very concerned about being the next victim in this crime ring. Now, a few of these guys have been caught, but it has been revealed that it's not just one group. It is coordinated groups that are communicating with each other that are breaking into these different studios. Now, since this has been happening, I've been going to these meetings and figuring out, you know, how can I protect myself and my company? We've done things like purchasing safes and hunkering down and things like that. So one of the solutions that I've come up with is, you know, at each of these break-ins, what seems to be happening is that they're coming in at like 3:00 or 4:00 in the morning when no one is there, and they don't have any resistance, and they're able to break through with a variety of different ways to get in there. So I've chosen not to store my gear at a studio, and what I've chosen to do is to store all of my gear in a box truck. And I don't want to keep it away from where I'm at. So what I'm requesting is that I'm able to park this box truck in my backyard. I have security cameras and surveillance 24/7, either me or my fiance are always at the house. And so there's always someone there that has eyes on the gear whenever it's not being used on a production set. And when it is parked in the backyard, it is out of sight from the street. Anybody walking past would have no idea that it's there. My backyard is on a slope, so it's much lower than ground level. It does not affect any of the neighbors or visible sight. To actually see it, you would have to be in the backyard. And so this is more of a safety concern and security measure for me of, you know, securing my belongings for my company, and, you know, hopefully that these guys in this crime ring eventually get caught. I do know that a few of them were arrested back in October or September of last year. But like I said, it seems to be more than just that group. So it is a safety concern for me, and that's why I'm here to request the permit.
Thank you. Appreciate that. There was no opposition, and this is in District 3, so we will let the Commissioner Dance lead the discussion on this case.
As long as you're there, if you could just stay for a couple minutes?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you asking for, what period of time are you asking for? Is this a temporary situation?
For now, I think, you know, it's because of the break-ins, it's kind of hot right now. So I mean, I'm requesting as much time as I can, you know, I would say maybe if we're looking at a year or two years. And then I believe at that point, you know, hopefully that the situation has been contained and, you know, is no longer happening. And then I think at that point, I can revisit, you know, if I'm able to park it somewhere else. But I would say if we could request for two years at this point, that'd be great.
Okay, and you mentioned that it was not visible. I mean, have you tested that out?
I have. I do have a picture of it as well, from the street, where you can see what it looks like when it's back there. I don't know if there's a way for me to display that.
You can hand it to him.
Yep. So this is the first picture, and I can show the second one, it's being back there. So this is from standing in the front of the street, looking at the backyard, and then I can swipe over to the second picture to show.
Your house is which?
Can you ask that question again?
Your house is which one of those?
My house is on the right.
Okay, and that's from the backyard?
Yes. And so when I swipe over, this is the truck that is parked in the backyard, once the gate is open. But when it's closed, nobody even know that it's there. The purpose is for it to be out of sight, so nobody even knows it's there. It's, like I said, it's more of a security measure for me.
Okay, and have you talked with your neighbor?
I have. I've spoken with them about it. I let them know that I was coming to this meeting to speak with you all, to get approval, and they're aware of the whole situation.
Are they on your own representation? Are they favorable?
Yes, the main thing for them was keeping it out of sight. So once I parked it back there and they realized that it's, you know, no one can see it from the street, there hasn't been any opposition.
Okay, and the access is through that gate that's shown on that picture? Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else have questions? Please have some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple quick questions. Do you know the height of the truck?
I want to say, it's an estimate, I would say the height of it is probably around 10 feet. I could get an exact measurement for you, though, and relay that back to you.
Just, if we said something like, truck height to be less than 11 feet, that would be safe?
Yes.
And then the approximate height of the fence is?
The approximate height of the fence is about six feet, but like I said, in the backyard, there is a slope, so once it's parked down there...
Can't see it.
Can't see it at all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And just to clarify what you just said, I mean, from looking at the pictures, it's not just the height of the fence, but there's some tree screening back there, is that right?
That's correct. So the backside of the backyard is covered in trees, so you can't see it from behind the house either.
Okay. All right, thank you. I think you can step down. You got, sorry.
Thank you, just to add one question for you. So I think this was a code enforcement, there was a code enforcement attached to this, and have you, I think there was a couple things noted about debris and some trash, and I think also, just as I looked through it, I think a vehicle that was parked on gravel to the right, it looked like a lot of that has been, obviously in this picture, rectified?
Yes, yes.
Is that gravel section, is that that strip that's right there that they're talking about?
Yes, so there's a picture somewhere in my phone, it's an old picture, though, so it might take me a second to find it. But originally, when this was filed, it was part of asking about the box truck, as well as on the right side of my driveway, it was a gravel lot that I had put down to park my truck. Since then, I paved it with concrete, and so it's no longer issue.
Got it. And did any of this paving require any variances because of adding more impervious coverage, or did you have to submit for any variances as part of this that?
I did not. No, I spoke with, I forget the gentleman's name over in the zoning office, but I basically asked for permission for it before I did it, and they gave me the okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yes.
Hope your stuff is safe and...
I appreciate it, me too.
Back to you.
Okay.
All right, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, if you can speak to staff's recommendations on this?
The staff did recommend this case be approved for 24 months, subject to him parking on a hardened surface.
Okay, I'm prepared to make a motion, unless anybody would like to speak with anyone else.
I don't have any other questions.
Just one quick question, actually, for Carl, Carl Carver from Stormwater. Morning, Carl.
Morning.
Just to kind of dot our i's and cross our t's on this, so if there were a hardened surface, that surface that is supposed to be added, it looked like there already existed there in the pictures that the gentleman showed, but to the extent, do you know of any need for impervious coverage variances if a hardened surface were added on this site?
It could be verified, you know, at that time, to see what the calculation would come up to be, you know, what kind of surfaces he's parking it on.
Okay.
If he was parking on pavers, he might get some credit.
Okay.
But typically, it's usually for something just to park it pad, it's typically not going to create a need for a variance, but it could be close.
Okay, yeah. Just wanted to confirm that that recommendation doesn't kind of...
You could always have him submit a site plan, and then we could calculate it.
Okay, great. Thank you, Carl.
Okay, I, at this time, would like to move for approval in accordance with staff's recommendations of 24 months, subject to parking on a hard surface, and also with the requirement that prior to the B O C meeting, the applicant submit confirmation of the height of the vehicle to... Yes, and then I would move to place that consent.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Dance. Do we have a second?
Only question I would maybe recommend adding, our stipulation, I think would be helpful just to have a site plan. I know it's not a large addition, but just to kind of make sure that's memorialized and doesn't create an undue kind of need for variance later on.
Commissioner Dance, are you amenable to that amendment?
Well, not without discussion, so somebody, if you want to put it in there and second it, maybe we can have some discussion.
So we have a motion, can we get a second and then have discussion?
Second.
Okay. Now, are you suggesting that she?
Yeah, only suggestion would just be, for something like this, if we are going to be adding hardened surface, just that we just have a site plan where at least that calculation is done, to reflect the existing coverage area. Just don't want to put the applicant in a position where later on, there's a variance that comes up and it's needed because of them trying to comply with a lot, and hopefully it's not something where it ends up being needed, but I think it would be helpful for us to have that documentation.
My only comment to that was, it seemed like the surface was already there, so I'm trying to make sure, understand what's the value of requiring the site plan if the surface is already there?
I think I had an aerial that showed it with no surface, and...
I think the photo he just showed, I thought showed the box truck on a hardened surface already.
That's right. Yeah, it looks like this is before that, and it looks like...
If I could get the applicant to come back up real quick, and I think just quickly look at the photo, I think it was the second one you swiped over, too.
Yes.
Yeah, so the surface is there. Hardened surface.
Okay. As long as we're comfortable that that, I think the applicant had mentioned that there was already review and sign off from the county on that, so I'm happy to withdraw that. I think I just know that there is a discrepancy between the aerial and this, so if there had been a subsequent addition of this hardened surface, I didn't...
Yeah, I'm not sure when the aerial picture was taken, but it seems that's pretty old, prior to me even buying the house.
Okay, all right. Thank you for clarifying that.
Yes.
I'm fine going out ahead without the site plan, then. Thank you for entertaining the discussion.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion from Commissioner Dance, and a second from Commissioner Anderson. Any additional discussion? Call a question? Motion passes 4-0.
All right, next case is L E P 23 of 2022, Coiman Helado Mazareos Reyes, request a temporary land use permit to allow a landscape business and related vehicle parking in Land Lot 626 of the 19th District. The property is located on the south side of Milford Church Road, across from Farmington Drive. Is the applicant present? The director of the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed? The L E P 23. The director shows there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
Good morning. My name is Michael, on behalf of the applicant, Coiman. Yes, so this permit is in reference to getting some vehicles, some landscaping vehicles that we have for parking on site, on the actual property here. Part of the parking is on Georgia Power's property, but we've discussed with the owner there, and I believe we have a, an approval, an email from one of the directors at Georgia Power for the fence that was put up. One of the complaints that we got was that the vehicles could be seen from the street, and so of course, we put up a fence so that you can't see any of the vehicles from the driveway. The need, of course, is, like the previous applicant was saying, is that we had break-ins previously on our vehicles, and so we needed to have them stored somewhere where they'd be safe and close to kind of the owner. And so we submitted, I believe, another picture of the actual fence. Okay, so, and then we also did submit this photo. These are all the neighbors that we had spoken with. Last time we were here, we submitted the registrar of all the neighbors with their applicants, or with the signatures of their approval, you know, us parking our vehicles on site. We spoke to all the immediate neighbors, none of them had any complaints. I believe this is now the third time we were here, with no people that showing up opposed to it. So I did want to just make that record. And then I believe there's a photo of, did we send it? The three, okay. Okay. We do have some pictures as well of the fence, I know you guys requested that last time. So let me grab those real quick. So there are five photos. This is the very tail end, from the previous drawing, that you can see this wraps around onto Georgia Power's property, and you can't see it, but behind that fence, there's two trucks. Of course, this is just so you can see from the street. Oh, okay, thank you. So you can see from the actual street, sorry, I shouldn't move it. Okay. Oh, this is another shot from the street. This is from the inside of the property, just showing essentially where the fence is built. This is closer to the actual property side, if we can go back in a second to the actual outline of the fencing. And then here is the main part when the gate is closed. So this right side over here is where it wraps around, so you can't see it from the street. This is the only part of the fence that is visible from the street, and I outlined it, if we can go back to the fence outline here. I outlined the purple there is where it is actually visible from the street, and then the green is the, are the gate openings there. I think that's it. Oh, yeah, no, that's it. Those are the pictures. Thank you.
Is that your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, all right. And there was no opposition that I saw noted at the beginning of the hearing for this case. This case is in District 4, so, and that's my district. And I want to be sure I understood, you were saying you had some conversation with, or you've been in communication with Georgia Power as it relates to the substation? Is that what?
Yes, we spoke with the director of the Georgia Power that's right next door to us, and that we share part of that fence with... and that we share part of that fence with, let me find the letter here, such that you can see it. Here we go. Bill Dickerson. And I I thought this was submitted last time, so I don't know if you guys got this or not, but this was the, his letter to us that, of course, said that, you know, we could put up the fencing on part of that part of the property and that they're okay with, especially because they, Georgia Power also has vehicles that go through that entrance that you can see with the fence. And so they thought they were going to put one up, but since we needed it, they're okay with us putting it up.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions of the this applicant while he is here? How long has this, have you been in business at this location?
At this location, since 2019, I believe.
Okay.
Nineteen, it was like the little tail end of nineteen.
And then, and in that time, where where has the equipment been stored before it was brought here?
I believe it's mostly been stored at the, this property, but for a short time, we had it at a commercial lot off the corner of Marietta Highway and Cobb County. There was partial parking there, but since then, the owner of that property moved away, and it was just kind of like a verbal agreement. We didn't have anything signed or anything like that, and so the new owner moved in. They wanted to charge, I forgot how much it was, but it was something that unfortunately was feasible for us.
And and could you just tell the commission, you know, what type of equipment are you proposing to be stored here?
Uh, yeah, so two, two vehicles that are landscaping vehicles, and then I believe one trailer that has landscaping equipment on it.
When you say landscape vehicles, what, where?
I don't know what's the specific. Basically, they're just big trucks for hauling. I think I'm going to say four fifties, F four fifties with with basically dump truck backs on them. Does that make sense?
Because I just want to reconcile that with the application, the information that I have.
Yeah, yeah, and just so it should be noted as well, that applicant was submitted, I believe the application was submitted in September of, or maybe it was like May or August of 22, almost a year, I think, or close to a year that was submitted. Since then, that that need has changed. Some of the vehicles are now with some of our employees. Previously, we had employees come. They would park their vehicles onsite, and then they would take company vehicles out. Since then, some of the vehicles that are company vehicles have been able to be taken in by some of the employees, and so, of course, the need now is only for a couple of those vehicles. Does that make sense?
So so the summary, so the application that we have is not accurate then, because.
Uh, to this point, correct.
According to what we have.
Yes.
I see four commercial vehicles, two dump trucks, two wood chippers, two trailers on gravel area.
Correct.
And and that you would have employees coming to to the lot every day to pick up these items or pick up these this equipment and then go to job sites.
Right.
And then presumably bring it back.
Right.
So you're saying now that's not the case.
Right, yeah, yeah. Since we got that complaint, of course, we do still need the housing for two of those larger vehicles, but for the smaller ones, those will be able to be taken to the employees' residences themselves, and then they, of course, have possession of it. And we don't have to store all of that, and we don't need all the extra traffic coming into the property for all of that extra movement.
Okay. All right. Are there any other questions you all have of the applicant?
Yep. Thank you for the detail and on the on the fence is very helpful. Question I had, last time we were here, we spoke about the, you talked about the dump trucks, and there was a, again, a need for the hardened surface, and I was just kind of looking at those pictures and just wanted to.
Yeah.
Better understand where that hardened surface is right now.
Yeah, so so with that, yeah, with that, what's on there right now is an asphalt surface. I don't know if that's considered a hardened surface, but the previous, I think it was someone that went out there, said that was gravel. It's not gravel, it's asphalt. I'm not sure if that's considered a hardened surface, but, you know, the owner is willing to go through putting down concrete if, you know, if it's subject to approval. The owner just doesn't want to put in, it's going to be a big concrete job if we do it, probably like 40K, 50K, so of course, he doesn't want to make that investment and then say, well, because part of the concrete that would have to be poured would be onto Georgia Power's property as well, so it would cause that extra headache. So if we can get that subject to approval, certainly that's something that that he wants to do. He just doesn't want to do it without without the approval.
Makes sense, yeah, understood. Thank you for the explanation.
Okay, yeah.
Any other questions of the applicant while he is here? Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
John, question for you. I know staff's recommendation was to deny the request, but it seems that was based on a certain set of circumstances when the application was submitted, but the applicant or his representative is saying those circumstances appear to have changed. And I guess my question to you based on that, what is staff's recommendation now?
And you are exactly correct, Commissioner Hughes. You know, the staff denial is based on a certain set, certain set, certain set of circumstances. And based on the presentation the applicant made this morning, you know, he's talked to all the neighbors, he's got a clear fencing plan, he has the fence. You know, the staff recommendation probably would have not been as harsh as it was when we did this back in October. So, you know, if the board wants to approve this, you know, I'll probably, you know, agree to this fencing plan that's on the screen, the type of fencing, but I probably would not encourage him to concrete the asphalt milling area, just so we don't encourage this to be a long-term type use. This is supposed to be a temporary land use permit. So parking on the milling would probably work over time, as far as we're concerned, because it will get crushed and condensed down into a hardened surface eventually.
Okay.
Any questions Commissioner, fellow commissioners have regarding this case? And John, one other question for me, is this application the result of a code enforcement matter?
Yeah, yes, it is.
Okay. And I know we have we've had this application now for at least four months. And I guess I'm a little uncomfortable making a recommendation to move this forward without something a little bit more concrete, no pun intended, in terms of the types of vehicles that are planned to be stored onsite. Like I said, the application says one thing, and what the what the applicant or what was described this morning is is not the same. And I think for me, I would want to have something in writing that more clearly defines what is actually going to take place, what type of equipment, and if there are no employees coming to the site every day, that needs to be in writing. I, and what I'd like to recommend that the applicant do is is consider, because where I'm headed with this, I guess, is continuing this for 30 days, but but I think I need you to meet with staff to sit down and develop some zoning stipulations that more accurately describe what you're proposing to do there, since they've changed since this application was submitted last year. And so my recommendation would be that we hold this for 30 days, direct the applicant to meet with staff, develop some zoning stipulations, and then bring this back to the Planning Commission next month, and that's my recommendation. Second. All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call a question? All right, motion passes four zero. Next case.
Okay. Hey, Margie, can you get with the applicant and get his phone number and exchange phone number so you can coordinate the stuff that the Planning Commission needs? Thank you. Okay, next case is LEP 24 of 2022. Helada Escobar requests a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 60 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Kurt Drive, north of County Services Parkway. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LEP 24? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
I'm here making a presentation for a land use permit because currently I'm only allowed one parking spot on my property, but I need four, one for myself, one in case, and one for my daughter, who also has a vehicle. That's why I'm here today. And then I also have a paper here for the neighbors that that signed off that I spoke with that said they're in agreement with me.
She want to mention anything else at this point?
No, that's that's my whole presentation.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This is in District One, and Commissioner Beloyne will lead our discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Mr. Peterson, can you just go ahead and tell us about? I'm sorry, is there a question?
Sorry, did you have a question?
She can stay there, that's fine. There's no opposition, that's fine. Mr. Peterson, tell me about the approval and or the staff recommendation that seems to be for approval. What is it you like you think we should do here?
Yeah, the the staff recommendation is for approval for 24 months, subject to all cars parked on a hardened treated surface and no more than two cars be parked in the driveway at any time. You know, this house is really small. You know, according to tax records, it's only 720 square feet, so it only allows one car on the property. So I think she's asking for four cars, so the staff was okay with trying to split the difference on it, because if you look at the aerial photograph, I mean, there's a lot of cars parked on the property currently. And, you know, this this was a code enforcement complaint with several different things, including parking on the grass, number of cars, and some litter and debris. As my understanding, a lot of that has been cleaned up now and has been fixed.
Okay.
So right now, the applicant just needs the number of cars increased.
For the applicant, can you tell me what it is behind the property? It appears as though the building continues past the property line or something does.
She said it was a an outdoor garage. A covered garage.
Are you able to put any more cars in the covered garages rather than leave them all out front?
She doesn't have any cars, just things that she has to store? Yeah, she doesn't have any cars back there. She said she just has her stuff back there and she can't park stuff back there.
Okay, well, staff recommendation is for parking of not more than two cars in the driveway at any time. That was the staff recommendation I'm trying to deal with, but, you know, it looks like right here there are more than two cars in the driveway, and I'm asking, do you have any garage area to store any cars in at all?
She said, yeah, she can she can move some of the stuff in the back to make room for a car, but preferably she would like to have at least three in the front.
Okay, let me go back to staff. Staff are modifying that to not more than three cars in the driveway, or is that going to create a problem, do you think?
Can she park it on a hardened treated surface?
Can she?
Adentro, si.
No, no, no.
No, es como grava?
Si.
Nada más.
No hay concreto?
No.
She said it's just only gravel in the front. So it would be a hard treated surface. She said it'll be expensive, but she doesn't have much money, but if you guys need me to, she can do it.
Thank you. Okay, and then let me just kind of a word of caution. One thing that concerns me here is that there seems to be a car that is almost protruding out into the road, and I think that's part of the concern is to get cars away from the road, so. All right, you can have a seat. Thank you. My motion is for the recommendation of approval, consistent with staff's recommendation for 24 months, subject to both of the staff conditions, parking of all cars on a hardened and treated surface, and not more than two cars to be parked in the driveway at any time.
All right, we have a motion. Commissioner Beloyne, we have a second.
A second.
Is there any discussion? Not, we'll call a question. Motion passes four zero.
Okay. All right. Hey, Margie, can you remind the applicant to come back in two weeks for the BOC? Thank you. All right, next case is SLEP 16 of 2022, Helles of Georgia Incorporated. Request a special land use permit for a Jewish faith student student center in Land Lot 97 of the 20th District. The property is located on the west side of Frey Lake Road, west of Campus Loop Road, south of the intersection of Frey Lake Road and Campus Loop Road. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to SLEP 16? Please stand up, raise your hands. Ten, okay. The director show there's 10 people here in opposition to SLEP 16. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Hello, my name is Cindy Sproul. Contrary to Helles' statement, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Go ahead. I go ahead? Go sit down, okay.
I was hoping she was going to speak for me, but guess not.
Go right ahead, Kevin. Thank you.
Thank you, planning commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf, and happy to be here on behalf of Hillel's of Georgia in this application for a special land use permit for a property located here at 3561 Frey Lake Road. Just to remind you again, this was heard in December. I want to kind of highlight for you and remind you about where this property is located. This is a house located on that small extension of Frey Lake Road. You can see it on the map and aerial that's in front of you, which gives you the sense of exactly how this is positioned. On the right, across the street, is Kennesaw State University is where this is located. To the left, you start to see there's the Pine Tree Golf Course and Pine Tree Neighborhood. But it gives you a sense of exactly where this property is situated. This is proposed for a faith-based student center for Hillel's of Georgia, for and to support the Jewish student population at KSU in their endeavors and consistent with the mission of Hillel's. Again, I want to really look at the location and positioning of this particular house. This segment of Frey Lake Road is a small dead end street. It's got four homes on it, five if you count the one really at the corner where it turns off the main Frey Lake and turns into a small segment of Frey Lake before it connects to Campus Loop Road. Even from this perspective, it's hard to distinguish whether it's on Campus Loop Road or not. It is not, but that's what's, is really what constitutes its front yard is Campus Loop Road for KSU. Also importantly, if you'll see, kind of in the middle bottom of your screen, you can see the close proximity of the student parking deck at KSU. And that becomes important as it relates to the operation of this proposed student center, how it will function and how it will fit in actually with what has occurred here. But also importantly, this property, I think this is certainly an important factor for this commission in considering a special land use permit here. At the bottom of your screen, also on Campus Loop Road, similarly situated as this property, is the Catholic Student Center, which is a house, just like this house, situated there off of Campus Loop Road that serves a very similar type of purpose as a student center, faith-based for Catholic, those students that are Catholic. Also, at the other end of this road, of Frey Lake Road, at Campus Loop Road, where you have Campus Loop and the, if I call Frey Lake proper intersection, is another faith-based student center that has been approved for a special land use permit, all in a row. If you go down the middle of this, you start there at that intersection where you have Campus Loop bent off to the right, where the arrow or pointer is now, that's been approved for a SLUP, for a faith-based student center. Below this, to the south of this, at the bottom of your screen, has been approved for a faith-based student center by SLUP. And now in the middle, we're proposing today a faith-based student center as a special land use permit. Importantly, along this small segment of street of Frey Lake Road, as I stated, there's four houses really that are there, one at the corner of those, one of which is our proposal. And we also have received in writing two pieces of communication email from two of the owners on that street expressing their support for this proposal. And I also want to submit that for the record as well. So we have two of those five that are there. Really what is, the discussion point comes out of the hearing that we had last week. Importantly, one of those things is the no parking. Along Frey Lake Road, this small segment, it is a smaller side street. It's important that there's no parking along this side street, no on-street parking. To that end, several years ago, there were placed, when there was an issue of student parking here, there was placed nine no parking signs on this one small segment, nine. Nine no parking signs, almost a no parking sign for every 25 feet of this street, on both sides of the street that are there now. In keeping with that, we have also agreed as part of our stipulations, as a zoning condition and stipulation, that for Hillel's of Georgia and our use of this property, our students will not, and we will not, use the property and have folks with our use parking on the street. We have prohibited parking on the street. Why is that important? Well, one of the issues that's come up in our discussions has been from an enforcement model. Yes, there are no parking signs, which can be enforced by Cobb County Police, not necessarily the KSU Police Department, because this isn't technically KSU property. So there's been also some tension there as far as who can ticket those that park there illegally, who can get those towed. But regardless, violation of the no parking signs is an offense which can be cited by Cobb County Police, which has been done in the past, that's been difficult to do. But what we have done is taken that extra step further. We could have just said, there's no parking signs, the issue is addressed. But we have incorporated that into zoning stipulations, and why is that important? It's important from an enforcement standpoint. As a zoning stipulation, if we have, be it students or others, that are using our property, that are using the student center, associated with the student center, if they are parking on the street, code enforcement can be called. And why is that different? Code enforcement can investigate that. Code enforcement, when a complaint is lodged by their policy, must come out, must investigate, must write it up, and must issue a notice of violation and pursue that if that's the case. Why is that also even more important than simply a traffic citation? Because if this is a true problem, and if this Hillel's of Georgia creates a true problem with people associated with this use parking on that street, it can be shut down. A traffic ticket doesn't shut anything down, it doesn't shut a use down. So Hillel's is very understandably serious about this rule and about how it will enforce that with its students that attend and that visit. Because ultimately, code enforcement can shut it down as a use. That's far more of a bat, or hammer, if you will, than simply traffic citations or a traffic ticket for no parking. And that's why we believe it's far more impactful to this application. Some of the other stipulations that we have included as well, that there will be no outdoor activities after 10:00 PM. But importantly, we have also included a code of conduct. This is a specific code of conduct that's used at Hillel's across this nation, at other universities, but specifically tailored for a student code of conduct for Hillel at Kennesaw State University. And it's a detailed code of conduct that we have placed as part of our stipulations to demonstrate their commitment to the types of behaviors that will not be acceptable at this location. And it's a very detailed document, it contains many of the things that you would think about, no alcohol, no drugs, and so forth and so on. And their behavior will be acceptable at this location at all times or they can be forced to leave by Hillel's. And they will be a code of conduct that is a part of this stipulation, and it will be a part of their ongoing operations and daily operations. And as a stipulation and as a zoning condition, it's incorporated into the fabric of the special land use permit and has to stay in place, and we think that's very important. And again, demonstrates their commitment. Lastly, I want to speak to just again to the importance of Hillel's and what it provides to a student population, and specifically to the Jewish student population. It provides, as part of its mission, a safe place, a place where students of Jewish faith can gather in small groups, can come by, can stop by, but importantly, provides a source and a resource for those students in the event of anti-Semitic activities that could occur. Hillel's leads that effort at universities across the country and would lead it here. And it's an important part of the mission that they would provide. In doing so, primarily, they have small groups that meet, students that come by during the week. The only other activity they really engage in that's more than a few or a handful, as they do tend to have Friday night dinners when you'll have upwards of 30 that may attend, all who park or arrive from elsewhere and not park on site. It's been handled and managed and will continue to be handled and managed by Hillel's in the way that we've set forth within these stipulations and through this code of conduct. This location, as demonstrated by the other two approvals that have happened on either side of this, when you look at this map, is simply continuing what is an engagement with the university by a faith-based student center in a location that's entirely appropriate. I think your professional staff recognized that fact in recommending approval of this application. And we likewise would respectfully request your recommendation of approval to the Board of Commissioners, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Now, we're here from the opposition. Just to remind you, you have 10 minutes.
Sorry about the earlier miss. My name is Cindy Sproul. And contrary to Hillel's statement that the residents are supportive of this SLUP, I am strongly opposed. I have lived in the house adjacent to the proposed SLUP for 42 years. I bought the home as a young adult, 23 years of age. I am now a senior citizen, 66 years of age. My husband has also lived in this house for close to 26 years. I have fought to keep our neighborhood residential for the last 20-plus years. I was directly involved in separating Frey Lake Road from Campus Loop Road because we couldn't get out of our driveway due to student traffic. I was directly involved with persuading KSU to build the fence and barrier between our neighborhood and KSU to prevent the students that were coming over and hanging out in the street and in our driveway. We have worked very hard to maintain our residential atmosphere. Having a student activity center next door to us creates a hardship for us and some of the neighbors. If you grant this SLUP, it will strongly decrease the value of my property. It will make our home very hard to sell in the future to an individual or a family since I will be surrounded by KSU and the proposed Hillel House on all three sides. Front sides and the back, we have Frey Lake. If you do grant this SLUP, my husband and myself also want a SLUP because you leave us no alternate than to sell our home to another student organization. KSU and KSU Foundation have expressed in the past, they are not interested in buying any neighborhood homes. So therefore, I am left with a home that will greatly decrease in value if this is approved. Please keep our neighborhood residential. Thank you so much for your attention.
Good morning, my name is Phil Anzalone. I live in the neighborhood. I am actually within 1,000 feet of this proposal. I am also president of the Pine Tree Civic Association. And basically, not only myself, but the Board for Pine Tree Civic is strongly opposed to this. We want to keep this neighborhood a residential area. It's extremely unfair to compare this center to the Jewish Center, the Catholic Center, or the Lutheran Church that is there. First of all, by Georgia law, if it's a place of worship, you have an exemption from zoning laws. This is not a house of worship. It's basically a propagation of faith. We all agree, Hillel is a great place, they do a great job. If you look at their other campuses, a vast majority of them are in commercial space. The, if you look at the other facilities, the Haddad Center, which, one of the other general, we went through major stipulations to basically segregate it from the neighborhood, force them to buy additional property, et cetera. The Catholic Center has been there since 1995 because it is physically separated from the residence. It's on Campus Loop Road, there is no access to the residential area. This is much different than having somebody next to you, something... So we were advised on Friday to go through the neighborhood and get a petition. So Monday, we went through there. So we have a petition, which I'll show you, has 61 signatures on it from the neighborhood. Seven of those are people within the 1,000-foot. In fact, actually, both sides of, the adjacent sides are both opposed. Both Cindy, who you spoke to, and the people next door who have young children, they're opposed. Soon, we're going to get a lot more signatures before the BOC meeting. One of the other problems on this, there is no barrier. One of the other issues too is there's a second-story deck that because the house is small, people use the second-story deck. That sound travels. Having a stipulation that says 10 o'clock isn't sufficient because it doesn't interfere. Something else, the owner of this house, who is basically proposed to sell this house to Hillel, he's never lived in there, he bought it two years ago. He bought it as an investment, good for him. The problem is, he went to KSU, KSU recommended, oh, why don't you make it a religious? A major point that is really at the heart of this is if you issue this SLUP, you're opening the door for any other organization to come in and say, I want the same SLUP. Because how are you going to differentiate between religions? This is not an anti-Semitic appeal, it's the wrong house in the wrong area. We want to see it, we made major concessions to try to get him to buy a house on Campus Loop Road where it was segregated from the neighborhood. We strongly ask that you deny this appeal. The other issue too on this is, they bought this property nine months ago, they started operations before they even submitted the SLUP. The owner basically gave them a price extremely high, he's been their lobbyist. All of us here are basically residents of Pine Tree, and we are going, the ones that are going to be the hardship. This facility supports KSU students. Their charter basically says they're open to all faiths, not just Jewish. So please do not consider this to be a faith-based, while it is faith-based, that it is limited to it. Thank you, please deny this.
Good morning, my name is Roy McPherson. I'm a resident of Pine Tree and strongly opposed to the granting of this SLUP. Stipulations proposed do not provide required protection for the neighborhood. Hillel has proposed the same stipulations that PCA, Pine Tree Civic Association, agreed to for the Haddad Center, which is going to be a new building built across the street, down five houses. Haddad is a house of worship, Haddel is an event hall center, and Haddad bought an adjacent lot, house to be demolished, to provide adequate buffering between the center and the residential area. Haddad is building a 20-space parking lot hidden from view of the control, hidden with a control gate to limit access. Haddel has three to four spaces for cars in their driveway. Haddel provides no benefits to the residential area, just hardships. Do you want to live next to a student facility that could have up to 50 students coming in and out? Cobb will be, not be in a good position to deny any other organization if you pass this, especially religious-oriented groups. If you pass this, you will destroy our community residentially.
Is there any other opposition? You've got one minute remaining.
Good morning. My name is Dean Stewart. I also live in Pine Tree Country Club. My house is at the dead end of the other end of this street, Frey Lake Road. Frey Lake Road is the only road in our neighborhood that has direct access to the college. When I moved in over 38 years ago, it was a small junior college, you could just weed in and out. Now, since the college has gotten so big, it's been, that road's been beaten up pretty bad. A lot of people renting there that are against county codes, but, you know, it's hard to get those people out of those facilities because of what you can ask, what you can't ask those people. people. And we got, there's going to be safety issues related to this Hadad Center we're talking about across the street. Their driveway is going to dump on to Fry Lake Road. And the people that are coming to the Hillel Center will have to walk around the fence since they can't drive in, and they'll cross right where the.
We're out of time.
Driveway crosses. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. All right. We have heard from the applicant and the opposition. This is in District 3. We'll defer to Commissioner Dance to lead our discussion in this case.
If I can ask, do we have a copy of that petition? Can the board see that? If I can ask Mr. Moore to come up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And it is still morning. I would note that's good for this body. Kevin, at our last meeting, and I mean, I revert to a lot of information that was shared at our last meeting, but at the last meeting, we had some specific requests that you all engage in conversations and that there were certain items that we talked about at that that I didn't necessarily see in the stipulations like, you know, hours and supervision and things like that. Is there a reason why those were left out of either your stipulation letter or the Code of Conduct?
The, no, not necessarily. We believe that we had addressed that with, through the Code of Conduct as far as the supervision that's there. And that's how we felt we were addressing that is through the Code of Conduct. If it's a matter of having a stipulation that requires there to be, you know, Hillel supervision at all times, we have no issue with adding that. We felt like that was what the Code of Conduct is doing there.
Yeah, I think we had discussed hours and direct supervision, but I'm just asking about that. And in addition to which, we talked about facilitating conversations. Can you kind of just describe how the conversations have gone since our last meeting?
Sure. And we absolutely did that.
What's different at this time?
From the conversations, not much is different. We, you know, we had conversations prior to the last hearing and then certainly engaged in conversations with representatives of, multiple representatives of Pine Tree Civic Association, also engaged in conversations with multiple adjoining owners of the properties, some of which were, you know, positive and fruitful for us and some of which we could not come to any, you know, additional agreements. I wish we had, and we certainly desired that and wanted to do that, but the discussions did not prove fruitful in that regard as it relates to those that were, that just spoke in opposition. I don't want to speak for them, but we couldn't, we couldn't get, find a place where we were asking for specifics, and that is, okay, what would you want to see, or what can we do, or how do we help this situation, or what is it you're concerned about specifically that we could address? And there is no answer to that from their, from their standpoint.
Okay. If any of there, I know right now there's a question before the Board of Commissioners as to exactly what district this location is in, so I want to invite my fellow commissioner who's in the, in the other district to participate in this discussion as well.
Of course. It's in Cobb County to me, so that's, that's where it is.
Right.
So I'm happy to hear from anybody.
I don't know. Mr. Boyne, did you have anything you wanted to ask him?
Mr. Chair, with your permission.
Yeah.
Let me just inquire, if I could, about whether there are any proposed restrictions regarding allowing any other groups to use the house?
No, there would be no other groups allowed to use the house. This is specific special land use permit for Hillels, period.
Do you have any comment regarding the noise concerns from the deck? Do you have any thoughts on that?
No, I think it's ludicrous comment.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I said it's a ludicrous comment. It's not any different than anybody else's deck on the back of their house. I mean, they're not putting 50 people on a deck or having, having that. We put in here, you can't have outdoor activity past 10. If that needs to be dropped back some time, we could do that, but I just don't find there to be much to that comment that this is going to create a large amount of noise. It's not a party house. I mean, this is, serves an entirely different purpose than that. And I think the Code of Conduct speaks to that.
You, I'm sorry.
It is a place of congregation, though, correct?
Sure, sure.
And you have said there may be numbers of students there at any one time, correct?
The only time you have more than a handful of students there would be a Friday dinner, yes. Much like I could have at my house.
So help me out with a longer-term issue here that is being confronted. The landowners are saying basically that they previously negotiated to get this row of evergreens planted along Campus Loop Road and kind of do a separation between the residential area, the private residential area, and the, and the campus. And certainly, this would erode that in terms of a barrier in that regard. And then you had another owner basically say they would want a SLUP, and they would want to bring another campus organization out. Where would this end logically? Where could we, is there another place we can draw a line, or how would we deal with this?
From my standpoint, yes. Eight to 10 years ago, when this segment of Fry Lake Road was being abused by students, which I referenced, that was one of the solutions, as well as the no parking signs, and that was planted with the fence. But regardless, you concede the positioning of this segment of Fry Lake Road. I think it's one that is in such close proximity as a segment that having it being used as a faith-based student center of this type, I do not think is, and do not believe, and wholeheartedly do not believe, is detrimental to Pine Tree neighborhood and nor to the neighbors whatsoever. I believe it's in keeping with what occurs along the perimeter of the campus at several locations, two of which are right here, within a stone's throw of this location. So what happens with this particular street? The market will let that be determined, but I know that not all of the, the homes aren't all owner-occupied either on this street, on this segment of street either. So the location of it and the growth of KSU has dictated that in a large measure. And keep in mind, Pine Tree Civic Association itself is advocating for, has advocated for, and continues to advocate for closing off Fry Lake Road right here so that it would no longer access and connect to Campus Loop Road so that they can cut off Pine Tree neighborhood that would actually cut this street off from Pine Tree. So let's keep those types of things in mind as well. And I'd be happy to represent the schools if a faith-based student center wanted to be located at their house.
Well.
So from that standpoint.
My question goes more to the rest of the neighborhood. I mean, a comment was made by one of the opponents regarding the fact that a number of houses in Pine Tree Country Club are already rented to students.
Correct.
Do you have any feel for that?
Sure.
Or how prevalent that is?
I think it's fairly prevalent. I know that it exists based on anecdotal evidence that I've heard. I think that Pine Tree, as a neighborhood, has worked with that. We have adopted in this county several ordinances just because of the advocacy of Pine Tree in terms of trying to control the student rental population in their neighborhood. They have been active in where student housing has gone, you know, on this side of the KSU campus. I admire the neighborhood. It's a longstanding neighborhood, but a faith-based student location here is not going to destroy Pine Tree neighborhood. This is not the door being kicked open. The door was opened, it's been opened, it was opened over a decade ago with the Catholic, with the Catholic Student Center. It was open several years ago again with the one at the corner, again, a stone's throw at the, just at the north side of this street. So that, that has already occurred along this stretch of Campus Loop Road because it's theirs, right on the edge of the campus. And for these faith-based student centers, they can't be located on campus because of that. So that's why that's occurred.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Question?
Just for, just for reference, can you help just orient where the Hadad Center and the Catholic Student Center are on this map?
Sure. Sure. If we're, I'll start with the Catholic Center where it says R20.
Yep.
Okay. If it go, if you go up just a hair from there to that next, you can kind of see this little bit, about right there. And then if you go to the north side of this property at the intersection, you'll see where Campus Loop Road takes kind of a, bears to the right, Fry Lake comes in right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? In that spot, which is the, forms the corner there, right where that is, a little bit to the left, is where the other one is. The one, the other one I'm referencing, called the Cabot, but it's another faith-based student center.
Oh, sorry for the, I think I mispronounced, but thank, thank you.
It's, I mispronounce it often.
Okay. I mispronounce cat sometimes. I'm not the sharpest.
I try to do my best.
Yeah. Great. Thank you.
But that's where those two are located.
And just to add on to that, and so the existing land use on either side of the subject property, those are single-family residences at this time?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yes, that's true.
Just, and one more question again. I think we discussed this last time on, I think that gentleman from the opposition, Mr. Anzalone, I think had mentioned the ownership.
Uh-huh.
And I just wanted to make sure I heard it correctly, that the gentleman, or the person, individual or entity that owns this has owned it for several years, but has not occupied it? Is that?
That's not understanding. He's owned it and it's not, not, where, he lives nearby in Pine Tree, but not at this house.
Got it. And then the, there's a reference to nine months of ownership, I think, is that, and I think I heard that comment, but I can always ask the opposition, but if ours, Hillel, been occupying the space for nine months at this point?
I don't know if it's nine months, but it's several, since September, yes, is what I thought.
Okay.
I wanted to be accurate.
Okay. And then just to clarify, I think we did this last time, it is under a lease agreement with an option to purchase?
That's correct. But their commitment is 100% committed to this location.
Okay.
And again, with the special land use permit, it's only, the special land use permit for this use by Hillels is what's being requested and what it'd be held to. So you couldn't bring in, you know, some other student organization to do this.
Okay. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you for clarifying that.
Sure. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay. Thank you for your questions and comments.
At this time, if anyone else would like to call anyone forward and ask questions? At this time, then, I'm prepared to make a motion. And my motion would be that at this time and the status of this application, based upon the opposition and based upon articulated burdens and impacts of this proposal upon a residential neighborhood, I would move to recommend deny.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All right. Call a question? Motion is approved 4-0. All right. Looking at my fellow commissioners, is this a good point to take, just a 10-minute break? We could take a 10-minute break and come back at 10:55.
That's a clerk's decision.
Thank you, and welcome back to the February 7th, 2023 Planning Commission Public Hearing. I'll turn it over to John Peterson to call our next case.
Thank you. Next case is rezoning case Z1, Tara Broughton, request a rezoning from O-N-I to L-I for a contractor special, which is a tree landscaping business, and Landlaw 296 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Barbara Road, west of Old Concord Road. Is the applicant present? The director said the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z1?
No.
The director said there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward and be sworn in?
Good morning. My name is Tara Broughton, and I am looking to have the property on 411 Barbara Road rezoned from what is currently O-N-I to light industrial, as it is a industrial compatible currently, and for use of parking large vehicles overnight for a tree or landscape business.
Okay. Any, any other background you want to share?
I mean, more questions that I could potentially answer for it.
Okay. Are you currently in business now, somewhere there? Is this a new business location for you?
Uh, we are currently in business, and we have a business permit or license through City of Smyrna, so we don't have anything that's operating out of there at this time.
Okay, all right. This is in District 3, so I will defer to Commissioner Dan to lead our discussion on this, since there is no opposition.
You can just stay there for a second?
Mm-hmm.
So, when you say there's, there's no business right now, so the current?
It's currently vacant.
Okay, so when we have this, can you see this map that, that we're looking at?
Yes.
Okay, so what does the site look like now? Is, are there vehicles already parked in that location, or?
No.
Okay, can you tell us where it's proposed that vehicles would be parked?
Sure. The, currently to the right, I'm sorry, to the left of the house, there is a asphalted parking space that was, has been there for a while. On the left side of the property, it would be proposed to have asphalt millings to park vehicles on that lower part of the property.
It would be proposed to have what now, say that again?
We'd put asphalt millings down for the vehicles to be parked on.
Uh-huh. And can, where would that be, in the upper left-hand corner?
Uh, to the left side of the property.
Okay. Have you, would that be permanent asphalting? Is that what you're talking about?
Asphalt millings.
Okay, what is that, maybe?
Um, similar to what was being talked about before. It's like crushed asphalt.
Okay. And have you, have you had any discussions with staff about issues that there might be with flooding possibly, or?
Um, there was potential with it, I guess as the, where the, I guess in the map that shows the elevations of it.
Uh-huh.
Um, but with the parking of it, I don't, I don't think that's going to be any sort of issue when we'd had a proposed.
If that's the only use right now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah. I mean, if it's just to park the vehicles essentially overnight, that would be moving back and forth during working days and things like that.
Okay, but there's no workdays, you work at other sites other than this one?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And, and the nature of the business is what?
A tree and landscaping. Currently own a tree stump grinding business.
Okay. And, so how many vehicles are we talking about?
Um, I mean, it, currently we have one truck with a backup truck as well, similar to like an F-150, F-350.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and so, we also have some trailers with equipment on them, enclosed and open trailers.
Okay. And do you have any other plans to develop this site?
Um, not specifically. We had had proposed a building on the property, and that's more that we were told that if we ever thought about doing that, to go ahead and put it in the proposal now. It is open to size and location on the property. It would really just be used to maintain the vehicles, do some work on them, and have that storage in there, just like a workshop would be.
But that's not part of the plan now?
We did turn that in with, with the, the proposal.
Okay.
Um, and during the pre-planning meeting, it was discussed on potentially the, it's a, we'd had a, somebody draw up the plans for it, but if it was to be told that we had to change the size or location of it, we were totally open to that. It's really just to have a workshop for the vehicles. If we had, you know, a tool that we had to work on, not to leave it out in the open, but have it into a structure. And that's more or less, again, in the future plans potentially. So, we would be open to changing that based on whatever the recommendations were.
Okay, so your, your thought process would be that this is a development kind of plan, and that, that would be very futuristic?
Yeah. At this point, we really just need somewhere to park the, the vehicles. It was originally purchased because it has the office space on there and parking currently.
Okay. All right, anyone else have questions?
So, the, what looks to be a single-family home, that'll be your offices for now?
Correct. It actually was used for offices prior to us owning the property in 2020, or purchasing it back then.
You mentioned plan. Is there a, a site plan that you submitted as part of the application?
Uh, we, we did with the, with the building on it.
It's in the step analysis.
Okay. All right, that's all I have.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Any other questions?
Hi, just, just one quick question regarding the property next to you. Even though it's owned R-20, it appears that it has a fair number of trucks on it, and may also already be used for some?
It's a Georgia Power.
Georgia Power?
They back up to us on the back, and I believe that they have that section. They back up to us on the, the upper line there.
Okay, so yeah, I'm talking about to the right?
Oh, to the right, yes. That's a residence.
Okay. Do you know what kind of trucks go in and out of there? It looks like maybe-
He has a landscaping business.
So, there's timber in there?
He does.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Peterson, if you, if you can speak to the proposal, the site plan, and staff's recommendations, please?
Commissioner Dan, the, um, the staff's recommendation is to delete this to Neighborhood Retail Commercial with a special, with a special exception for the contractor use, which is permitted in NRC. The applicant is asking the rezoning from O-N-I to L-I for the contractor. You know, staff's position that the NRC would probably fit in better with the residencies on properties that are adjacent to this and across the street with it. And we do understand that there has been some complaints from the neighbors across the street regarding, you know, the way this looks. So, part of the staff's recommendation was to put a 20-foot landscape buffer and fence along Barbara Road to help alleviate that concern.
So, when you say delete to Neighborhood Retail Commercial, is that what you said? Is that, would you say your deletion was to?
It was deleting it to Neighborhood Retail Commercial with a special exception for the contractor's use. So, it, it would allow them to do exactly what they're proposing to do.
Will allow them to do it now? How about the future proposals that they've talked about? Would it allow for their-
If the board approves it to the plan that shows that proposed building, then yes, it would.
Okay. Is the proposed building in the upper right or left?
The proposed building is kind of on the western side in the center of the property.
Okay. So, if, if I hear the advocate correctly, what she's saying is that's a loose proposal? I mean, so if you, if you were approving it for those, the uses that are in her site plan as opposed to the specificity of, of, of the site plan, is that possible?
Well, if the Board of Commissioners approves it to the site plan, it's in the zoning analysis, then she, then they could build that future building at any time, you know, when they wanted to.
Okay. And if I, if I heard the comments correctly at our planning meeting from Mr. Carver, there may be some issues as to the location on the property and whether that was an appropriate location. Is this, that something that would be handled with staff?
That could be handled with staff and the district commissioner.
So, how does, how does NRC differ from L-I?
Well, NRC is a lot less intense zoning category than L-I. It requires less buffering, and it allows less permitted uses that might cause disturbance to the neighbors on the south side of the street.
Okay. And so, when you mentioned a staff recommendation of the landscape buffer and fencing, was that around the entire property?
It, it's adjacent to the R-20's own property. So, it'd be on the south property line and the east property line.
The south and the east, okay. Okay, does anyone else have clarifying questions?
Thank you both. Mr. Peterson, again, the nature of the complaints, were they as to noise, smell, just sightliness of trucks? Can you-
It was to how, how the property visually looks right now. You know, I believe some trees were cut down on the property, and they installed some, some asphalt millings to park on. But it's my understanding that one of the neighbors across the street was the one who complained about it. I'm not sure which one it was.
So, you, you're thinking it's principally a visual issue at this point?
Visual.
And so, with the fencing that you're recommending, and with the landscape buffering you're recommending, you think that will cure that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other comments, commissioners?
Okay, just-
It's back to you, Commissioner.
So, I've finished with the questions that I would like to ask if somebody else would like to-
I don't, I don't have any other, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Okay. All right, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to recommend approval to delete to NRC with a special exceptions outlined by staff, consistent with all staff recommendations. And with the further stipulation or understanding that any future revisions to the submitted site plan would be approved by staff and the district commissioner.
And, and we understand, just may I ask, inquire my question? Second, do I need a second for purposes of discussion first?
Yes, please.
Okay, fine. Second for purposes of discussion. Do I understand from the motion that if that's approved, that's subject to the conditions that Mr. Peterson discussed regarding fencing and landscape buffer? That, that's inclusive?
Just make it subject to all the staff comments and recommendations, and that's in there.
Yes, that's what my intention was, yes.
Okay, so, so with the understanding that, that, that this is subject to all staff comments and recommendations, I, I second.
All right, we have a motion from Commissioner Dan, a second from Commissioner Beloing. Any discussion? Call a question. Motion passes 4-0. Next case, John.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z5, Emerson and G.G. Real Estate Holdings LLC, request a rezoning from PSC to GC for a shopping center in Landlots 77 and 156 of the 18th District. The property is located on the northeast side of Mammoth Park- The property is located on the northeast side of Mableton Parkway and on the southeast side of Gresham Road. Is the applicant present? Let's direct show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, rezoning case Z-5? One, two. Let's direct show there's two people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward, be sworn in.
Good morning. My name is Adriana Marillo. I am here, uh, speaking on behalf of the owner Emerson Fernandez. Uh, he is the owner of the shopping center listed above. We are requesting a zone change from PSC to General Commercial. Uh, I am also representing, uh, the nonprofit foundation called the Oto Foundation. And just to give some background, uh, the nonprofit is leasing a suite in this shopping center. Um, our founders and committee has had a relationship with Emerson for a few years, which is why we decided to lease it. Um, our foundation focuses on promoting Mexican culture in Cobb County and providing an extra, extracurricular activity for the youth. We have, um, over 40 students ranging from four up to young adults, as well as some adults. We have a dance group and a Mexican equestrian group. The dance group is what we would like to be able to, um, practice in this location. The reason for the rezoning and why we spoke to Emerson and why he supports us is because we are a nonprofit, we do not have enough funds to pay the lease. And so we would like to rent the space on the weekends for a variety of events, maybe, um, a quinceañera, which is a coming-of-age party for, um, specifically Mexico, but also for any other event that we might have, um, inquiries about. We also would like to provide a space for the Hispanic community, specifically in Mableton and Osto area. Some ideas that we have is a, a space to have a college, uh, education class for first-generation, sorry, first-generation kids of immigrants, um, a construction, uh, course for construction companies, um, as well as a tax informational meeting for immigrants and, um, specifically for people whose dominant language is not English. So that is the, the reason for why we're working with Emerson to change the zoning. We spoke to, uh, Commissioner Sheffield about three weeks ago, and she mentioned to us that the county is moving away from General Commercial, and she was going to speak with the zoning department to provide a better option for us, just because General Commercial is very broad. And she was able to come up with a few ideas, um, hasn't given us a concrete answer, but said she would talk to the zoning department about that. And then we also met with the Mableton Coalition a few weeks ago, and, um, we walked the property. They have a few recommendations that they emailed to us last week, including a detention, detention pond on the backside of the building that needs to be addressed and, um, cleaned up, as well as some landscape in the front of the building and upkeep to the, in general to the whole building, just because it has been left alone for a few years now. That is all from my part.
All right, thank you. We'll, uh, we'll hear from the opposition now.
Good morning. Uh, my name is Robin Meyer, and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. And, um, we, uh, encourage you to recommend approval of this application, um, but with just a few conditions. Uh, first, I wanted to, to draw your attention to the fact that this application includes three separate parcels, all, all under the ownership of, um, of, of the same owner. The, there, the three part, the three parcels each needs, uh, a little bit of attention in, in the conditions that we're recommending. 615 is a restaurant, 621 is a used tire store, and 6041 is the shopping center itself. There have been, in the past, uh, before Mr. Fernandez bought this building, uh, bought this property, there have been significant code enforcement issues here. But in the, but since he purchased it, we have seen a significant improvement, both in the number of code enforcement, uh, cases that are filed, and just in the overall look and, um, maintenance of the property. And for that, we are very, very appreciative. The restaurant is the one at 615. There have, there have been some minor violations in the past, but presently, everything is resolved. 6021 is the used tire store. There have been multiple recurring violations. There are not any open cases right now. As far as I can tell from the, uh, notes in the code enforcement files, these violations have been, um, have been, uh, given to the tenant and, and not to, to the owner. There are not any open cases right now, but when we were on the property, um, I'm certainly not a code enforcement officer, but to my eye, those violations seem to continue, uh, in that there was a lot of outside storage and there were vehicles being worked on outside the building. The shopping center itself is, uh, in improving condition. It looks, as you can see from this photo, um, in, in very good shape, and when we were there, there was even more work going on in the building. There have been violations in the past under the previous owner, uh, but looking at the code enforcement, uh, records online, it seems as if, as soon as Mr. Fernandez bought this building, um, those, those issues were resolved. So when we recommend approval, uh, with conditions, um, we want to, want to first of all say that we, you know, we're very impressed with this, with the progress that this owner has made. We fully support the mission, um, of this, um, nonprofit, um, aimed at, at, um, being a bridge to the, um, Mexican and Hispanic community in our, in our area. Specifically, as far as conditions are concerned, the, um, used tire business is the issue, is the one that needs, um, the, the most attention. We are suggesting that if they are found guilty of any other, um, uh, code enforcement violations, that they would need to cease operation at this location. Um, I, it's, that I know seems a little harsh. We certainly are open to negotiation on that, on that front if there's a better suggestion there, but this is a situation which has been going on, um, for quite some time, over a, over a series of five or six years, and we really have not seen much improvement there at all. The county staff has made some recommendations about parking lot landscaping, which we, um, to which we fully agree, and, and some evergreen landscaping to buffer the two adjacent single-family homes. We agree that those, that that's very important and would like to see an overall landscape plan, um, that, uh, includes those staff recommendations and also does some landscaping along the street frontage. The, um, church that's located in the, um, shopping center has had some out, has had some family events in the parking lot, um, and we certainly, certainly support that kind of activity. There are, however, two homes that are fairly close to the property. So, uh, in an effort to locate those events in, in an area that would not create additional noise for those two homes, we're recommending that there be a condition that those outdoor activities happen in front of the shopping center, at least 250 feet from those two properties, and there, that still leaves plenty of room in this very long shopping center for that to happen. In speaking with the applicant, when we, um, when we, when we met on the property, um, he, he had a plan, uh, was thinking about painting it white. That seems to be all the trend right now. I think Commissioner Sheffield hit it on the nose when, uh, she said she thought it was a little trendy. We understand this morning that, that, that plan is off the table, so we're, we're very happy to hear that, that we're going to have, have at least one unpainted brick left in Mableton before the, before the, this is, this trend passes us by. And then lastly, that, um, that, that you're, that any conditions on, the conditions on any approval include, um, the list of prohibited uses, which I think you've seen from us before, um, the things that we have, uh, either are saturated, um, uh, we're either already saturated with or tend to create a nuisance in our community. So, um, with that, we do hope that you'll, um, recommend approval of this, taking this, these conditions into consideration. And we certainly, uh, are impressed at the progress we've seen and, uh, welcome this new nonprofit to our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin, before you leave, just a quick question. And just, um, your conditions requested in your letter dated, I guess, February 1st, on the landscape plan, you mentioned, um, submitting the plan within 90 days of the approval of the board of commissioners. Is that still the case?
Yes, that would be fine. I know that they've already started work on landscape plan, but I think it's, would be better to, um, have it occur after approval, uh, so that we can take some time to make sure that what they plan along the frontage, um, it will work with the various utilities involved. And I, I am not sure that the, that, um, there's been full communication about what the staff recommendation about the parking lot landscaping involves. So I think having time to work that out would be good.
Okay, thank you. Was there one other opposition? I'm sorry, I thought two, two of you stood, just the one. Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so we have heard from the applicant and the opposition. This falls in District Four, and, um, I will lead the discussion on this. John, if I could just ask, um, you to kind of share staff's, um, recommendation with respect to the request, um, just as some background?
And Mr. Vice Chair, the staff did recommend it be approved, subject to many conditions. You know, one of the conditions requires landscaping to be installed adjacent to, to residential properties where it's currently sparsely vegetated. We did, uh, recommend that, um, the parking lot be enhanced with, uh, tree plantings and some landscaping to help kind of soften, uh, the view of the shopping center and the road. And then we also wanted the, the applicant to submit a safety plan regarding, uh, some of the uses in the shopping center, just to make sure that there's going to be enough cameras and security and things like that to make sure it doesn't get out of hand.
Okay, all right. Any questions you guys have?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Just one for, um, um, the representative from Mableton Improvement Coalition, now that she's comfortably seated in the back of the room again. And, uh-
I'm not used to being so popular.
Okay, that's fine. I, I noted your comments and conditions, I didn't see anything about hours of operation. Maybe they were already, uh, addressed in the county comments, but you, you feel like the, uh, the conditions that you've requested are sufficient to, uh, protect the residential neighborhoods without, without any hour restrictions at all?
Um, yes, um, the shopping center's been existing there, um, for as long as I've lived in Mableton, so 40 years, somewhere in that neck of the woods. The homes behind the shopping center have been built since the shopping center was built. The homes to the side, the two that, um, we're concerned about getting some landscaping and some protection from events, um, I'm not sure of, of their age, but they are, um, at some distance, uh, and especially with the landscaping, I think they'll be fine. It's, it's a shopping center, so even with the event space, the event space, um, is towards the center of this, of the shopping center. And I, given the fact that it's on a five-lane highway, there's already, it's, it's already not an extremely quiet place.
All right, any other questions? If I could have the applicant's representative come back up real quick? Hi, I think you mentioned, um, obviously, you applied for GC, but you understood after some conversations with the district commissioner that there was a possibility-
Yeah.
-the staff would make some recommendations. And I don't know if you've seen staff's recommendations, there's requesting that it be deleted to CRC, which is Community Retail Commercial. CRC, and then there's, there, um, right now, there are eight zoning stipulations associated with this if we were to approve it.
Okay.
Are you familiar with them?
I'm not.
You're not familiar with them at this point? I don't want to belabor it, but, um, they're asking that, uh, a landscape, landscape screening adjacent to residential properties to the northeast be evaluated, so that would have to be done. There have to be an overall parking landscape plan submitted for review by the county arborist.
Okay.
That the safety plan be reviewed and approved by the district commissioner, um, and that you'd have to adhere to all fire department comments-
Yeah.
-stormwater management, water and sewer, and then DOT comments.
Okay.
So I just want to be sure you're aware of those.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. Are there any other questions that y'all have of the applicant while she is here?
Thank you for the, for the presentation. The only question I had was on the two, uh, parcels. Do you know, those are currently leased to those operators? The tire shop and the restaurant?
Um, yes. Yeah, that would be a, a question for the owner, sorry.
Okay, great.
Yes, sir. The restaurant just recently, sorry, leased, oh, I'm sorry. The restaurant recently renewed their-
Sir, if you could state your name for the record?
Emerson Fernandez.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, the restaurant recently renewed their lease for another five more year, and the tire shop, uh, lease expired, so right now, they are going month to month.
Okay. Got it, and so, um, is there any intention to have a long-term lease put in place with that tire shop, or is that just to allow for flexibility for a different use there?
If it's, uh, healthy for the community for not having them there, I may have to request them to leave.
Okay.
Uh, right now, uh, I don't have no plans to extend or not to extend.
Okay.
I mean, whichever one is healthy for the community, I would go that way.
Okay, and just to confirm, a lot of, um, I imagine that your lease language, um, will require them to adhere to any, just, conditions or zoning, existing zoning conditions? And if, to the extent that they violated this in the past, has that been something where you've received the notice and then passed it on to them?
I didn't understand your question again.
If you got like a code enforcement, is that something where usually-
I haven't got any letter from code enforcement.
Okay, so it's usually been something that's been put into the, directly to the tenant if they've ever had any violations?
I believe so, but I haven't got any.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it. Okay, uh, if there are no other questions, I'm, uh, prepared to make a motion, um, to approve, or recommend approval of the application, um, subject to staff's recommendations that the application be deleted to CRC, and that it be subject to all of staff's recommendations and comments as contained in the zoning analysis, uh, subject to the following changes. Under stipulation number three, the overall parking plan, air, overall parking area landscape plan be submitted for review within 90 days of approval by the board of commissioners, by, uh, for review by the county arborist, uh, which brings the parking area into compliance with current reg, uh, regulations as it pertains to, uh, frontage landscaping, parking lot trees, with final approval of said plan by the district commissioner, including implementation, which seeks to bring the parking area into compliance within three years of the, of the date, from the date of the board of commissioners' approval of this zoning request. And then, item four, the applicant's safety plan be reviewed and approved by the district commissioner and implemented for all events. Semi Cohen, um, with a provision that outdoor vents be located in front of the shopping center and at at least 250 feet from homes located at 55, I'm sorry, 5, 559 Gresham Road and 46, 476 Lane Drive. In addition to that, I would like to include, uh, a ninth, uh, zoning stipulation, this is just a list of prohibited uses, adult entertainment, liquor stores, sales of sexually explicit material. I can give you this rather than reading through that, but I, what, what's preferred.
If you could go ahead and read those.
Okay. Adult entertainment, liquor stores, sales of sexually explicit or drug-related items, pawn shops, title pawn shops, gold or precious metal dealers, video arcades as a primary use, check cashing businesses, discount sales, new auto sales, auto parts, auto services, used tire sales, taxi dispatching services, wholesale-only establishments, gun, knife, and weapon sales, shooting ranges, thrift stores, secondhand stores, flea markets. And then a tenth stipulation, leave the brick exterior on the front of the shopping center unpainted. And that would be my recommendation.
The second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Any discussion? Call a question? Motion is approved 4-0. Next case.
Okay, next case is LUP 1, Sergio Jamie Puga, request a temporary land use permit to allow more vehicles than the code allows in Land Lot 204 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Calle O'Drive, East of Quinto Drive. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 1? No. The director show there's no one opposed. Would the applicant please come forward to be sworn in?
I'm here because I'm requesting a permit to park five vehicles in my property. And so my property, it may not be, you know, my lot may not be that big, you know, but my driveway, it's a big driveway. I think it was built since they built the house. And I also have two parking garage where I can store two vehicles. So I live in this property, I bought this property like five years ago. So I live with my parents and my sister. So I have two vehicles, my sister has another two vehicles, and my dad, my father has one vehicle. So like, I have a vehicle, you know, for the weekends, and I have another vehicle just to go to work. And but during the day, there is only two vehicles in my property. Where, you know, those vehicles, I can store those vehicles in my two garage, in my garage. And so my sister, she also works, and she gets home until like nine, nine, she gets home like 11:00 PM. So like, you won't see five vehicles like every day because we, most of the time, we are working. So maybe on Sundays, yeah, but like I said, my driveway is wide and, you know, it's big, very big. And I also have, like I said, two garage where I can store the two vehicles that we don't use that often, you know? We just use those vehicles like for the weekends. And that's, I all have to say, you know?
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
This case is also in District 4, and which is my district, and so I'll lead the discussion on this. John, could you just share what staff's recommendation is with respect to this application?
Mr. Vice Chair, the staff recommendation is to deny the request.
And I see in the summary of the applicant's proposal, that's based on square footage of the home?
It's based on the square footage of the home? You know, he's barely under the square footage to get one more car. He needs 162 more square feet to get one more car on the property, because right now he's allowed two. He wants five, but if his house was a little bit bigger, he can get three. And if he kept two in the carport, you know, then he could have three outside. So he's a little bit shy of the minimum for another car. And also, you know, there's a pretty lengthy code enforcement case that went on for about 10 months with this.
Okay, okay. All right. Any other questions from our commissioners with respect to this? I'm curious.
Do you guys, do you guys want to see a picture of my driveway?
Sure, that's fine.
And there is one vehicle today, only one vehicle, that's the garage I'm talking about.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, but I never park cars on the, on my yard because you know, like, as you can see, I have, I have, my driveway is wide, you know?
Okay. I think Commissioner Blowing had a question.
For staff, is there, is there a way he could park other vehicles in the rear? Or is there a way to work around, as we've done on some others, or?
Well, and this one is a little bit unusual compared to the other ones we've had today, because this guy actually has a pretty large paved driveway, where the other ones just had either dirt or gravel or millings.
Okay.
So there's enough room on there for him to park two cars in the carport and then three cars on the paved driveway.
Okay. Well, let me go back to the applicant. That's not enough? Five cars is not enough?
No, five cars is enough.
Three, you mean, three. Three cars. He's saying three.
I'm sorry, I didn't count right?
Yeah, well, with the size of his house, he's allowed to have two cars on the property. He wants to have five cars. He has two for him, two for his sister, and one for his parents.
Yeah, one for my
One for you?
One for my parents.
Yeah, one for your parents.
All right, so you're saying he's only allowed to have two cars?
Two.
That rule
But there's enough room, there's enough room on here for five cars.
Would that change if this was an enclosed garage? Would that change anything?
No.
All right.
Michael?
Yes, sir.
And I don't understand why I got the code enforcement on me, because all my neighbors, two of my neighbors, they own a company, and they have too many vehicles. They will park their vehicles on the dirt. They don't have a driveway, just like mine. They have, I mean, like, I don't, I don't get why did I, I got the code enforcement on me? Because I have proof of my neighbors that, you know, they park too many vehicles, they have company vehicles, and they don't, they won't say anything to my neighbors, you know? So that's like
I'm not sure how to respond to that at this point.
Michael, I could. Our code enforcement department only works by complaint only, but we don't go out looking for problems with properties.
Okay.
So we had a complaint that there is 10 cars at this property.
Oh, no.
And apparently there's not, there's only five.
I never, never had 10 vehicles. Never had 10 vehicles in my property. Yeah.
So you mentioned you have a vehicle for work, you have a vehicle that you just drive on the weekends.
Yes.
Your sister has two vehicles, she has one for work and one for the weekends, too?
Yeah, and my, my parents, they have one vehicle. So like I said, most of the time, like during the day, there's only two vehicles. Those vehicles, I keep them on, you know, on the garage, in, yeah, on my garage, and because, and my sisters, she won't come back from work until night. So, I mean, you will never, during the day, it's like rare if you see more than two vehicles. And like I said, you know, my driveway is, is big, it's wide, and plus my garage. So I think I do have plenty of room, you know, for five vehicles.
I was curious, the aerial map shows some additional structures in the back, in the backyard. What are the, what are those?
Oh, that's like, my sister, she has two puppies. So like, she made like, it's like a cage, but we did the, like, we put the roof, so like when it rains, you know? So that's one of the, one of, one of those buildings is for her dogs. And the other one is like a shed, yeah.
To store equipment?
Yeah, yeah, to store my tools, yeah.
Any other questions for the applicant at this point in time? I think at this point, looking at staff's recommendation, staff is recommending denial of the request this time. And I think, at this point, I feel like I support staff's recommendation, so that my motion would be that we deny the request. And that's my motion at this point in time. Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I mean, if, he obviously has three extra vehicles that he's had there for some time, so, I mean, ordinarily, we'd give some time for compliance.
I'm open to that. I'm open to that. 90 days, 120 days?
He got three vehicles, that's a lot. And family hardships.
If you were to, applicant, if you, if you were limited to just the two cars, and so you had to find the three other locations, do you know of any solutions, any, just help us think through any nearby spaces where they might potentially have excess parking? That's, or, obviously, I'm not trying to have you sell your cars, right?
Yeah.
You need
I, I mean, I wouldn't like to sell my cars, or, I mean, I wouldn't like to kick my parents out, you know?
Right.
So, but like I said, you know, like, we don't keep five vehicles all day long, you know? Because we only, we will have five vehicles at night, but during the day, we will be working, you know, my dad, he works for a company, he does landscaping, so he works lots of hours, you know, during summer. So, and I think, you know, I have plenty of room for, you know, five vehicles. So two vehicles, they can stay in my, in my garage. I won't use those vehicles until the weekend, and, you know, three, the other three vehicles I can park, you know, in the driveway, in the driveway. Yeah, but they won't be there until night, yeah.
Right. Thank you.
I want to withdraw my motion at this time. That's okay. I want to propose a substitute motion at this point, that we, that recommend approval of your request, subject to 12 months, and give you time to consider relocating the vehicles to another location to bring you into compliance with the code.
Okay.
I need a second.
A second.
And consent.
There's motions for consent as well, and second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. Call a question? All right. Motion is approved 4-0. Did you want to, you understand 12 months?
12 months?
Yes.
Yeah, so I was requesting for 24 months?
Yeah, but I'm, 12 months to give you an opportunity to relocate the other three cars so that you're in compliance with the code.
Okay, so, so that means like, it does not matter if I have enough room in two garages?
Not. I think our hands are a little bit tied, so we're trying to work with you as best we can.
Yeah, okay, yeah, I understand.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so, quick question, do I have to come back on the 21st? Okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, but when you come back on the 21st, you should be out of here in the first half an hour.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
So come back at 9 o'clock in two weeks.
Yeah, okay, because like I said, you know, I got here at 9:00 this morning, I, so I had to get up in the morning, go to work, and then from work, I came here, and now I have to go back to work, you know, because most of the time, we be working.
Understood.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next case is LUP 2, Jasmine Robles, request a temporary land use permit to allow a commercial truck be parked on the property in Land Lots 277 and 300 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Spring Valley Road, northwest of Dink Lane. Is the applicant present? The director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to LUP 2?
No.
The director show there's no one opposed.
Hi, my name is Jasmine Robles. I'm representing the owner of this property. And I'm here to request a temporary permit to park my work vehicle in my current rental house that I have. It is a 11 by 12 box truck, a Zuzu box truck. I am the one who drives it, and I'm the one who works with it. It's not used as storage, and it's not used to haul into the property. I currently work with Empire Flooring Company, which is the nation's largest and number one flooring provider, and they keep me working from Monday all the way to Sunday most of the time. The vehicle's only there if I'm off work or I have a doctor's appointment or something like that. And it's usually out of there around 5:30 to 6:00 in the morning, and I come back around 8:00 to 8:30 in the night. And that's pretty much it.
All right, thank you. Appreciate that. There's no opposition, so, and this is in District 1. Commissioner Blowing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you tell me, is there any fence, boundary fence around this property at this time?
There is a boundary fence, there is a wood fence towards the back of the property and the front, well, not the front, but what's considered the back, the start of the back towards the property, after the driveway, where the actual home stops, that's where there is a fence to the right and the left side to cut off the backyard from the backyard. There is fencing on both sides, which is a chain link fence to the neighbor's house. All the neighbors on both sides, not, I don't know about the apartment building, because I was never able to get with the manager, I guess they keep avoiding me, but they're all okay with me having it there. And it's been there for about, I believe, March of last year is when I started there with the vehicle. And I have lived in that property on and off for about six years.
Where on the property do you usually park the truck? Can you point that out to us?
Uh, yes. Where should I point? Or do I just kind of say where it's at? So it's usually there, either the first vehicle going up towards the house on the, on the paved driveway, or it's on the right side of the house, which was, um, well, it's the, and the tree's kind of blocking it, but it's between where that green, a little bit further up, towards the right, a little bit further up. Around there is where it would be. It was gravel and I did get sided for it because it was parked on the gravel when code enforcement passed by, and I did put asphalt there, hot, hot treated asphalt. And I'm willing that if you guys are not okay with me having it in the front yard, I am willing to pay to pave the backyard and have it stored there. And the owner is okay with me doing that as well.
Can you tell us what the one other apparent car stored back there is?
That car was there when I first moved in from the previous renters. They have since taken that car out. They told me that it was there because they could not move it. I guess it wouldn't start.
All right.
They towed it out.
And, and the, the greenscaping that we see in here, the, the tree locations, they're still there?
I'm sorry?
The trees and the greenery are still there, such that pretty much if you parked that truck where you indicated, it would really not be visible from your immediate neighbor's backyard?
Yes, they're all still there.
And then you indicated there's fencing on the rear property line?
The rear property, there is a wood fence, I believe it's a good six to seven feet, and the property does kind of go up towards the back. So you can't really see a good eleven to twelve feet past that, just because of how the slope goes.
All right, and staff recommendation would be?
Commissioner Blowing, the staff recommendation and the analysis was to deny the request, mainly based on the code enforcement complaint we received on this, which was actually four things. When this came in originally, it was for a boat parking on grass, that was the complaint. Then through our investigations, we found there was a boat parked on grass, there was gravel parking, there was outdoor storage, and then there was the box truck. It's my understanding that the boat's gone, they're no longer parking on gravel, and the outdoor storage has been cleaned up. So now we're just left with the box truck issue.
And is there, is there a way we can accommodate the box truck without creating a hardship or concern for any of the neighbors, in, in your view?
Is there paving on the side of the house that kind of goes back towards the rear, or is that gravel?
It used to be gravel, and I talked to the officer who went out there, the zoning officer, she recommended for me to do hot asphalt, asphalt treated, and that has been done.
Okay, so that's treated then?
That's treated already.
So she can't park it on the side of the house towards the back? It sounds like it is a hardened treated surface now.
Okay. Will she still need this land use permit to do so?
Yes.
Okay. So if I move forward with approval, it would be for approval of, love to, what, what further staff comments and conditions do I need to place on that?
Well, since this is going to be her first approval, maybe the board should just consider doing it for twelve months, to kind of see how that goes, if there's any more complaints. If there's no complaints, then she can refile next year for twenty-four more months.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. If anyone else has any comments before I make a motion? Okay. My motion would be for recommendation of a, of a twelve-month permit, in order to allow the parking of this one box truck on the side of the house, specifically not the front of the house.
A motion?
Second. That's for twelve months?
Yes. Twelve, twelve months, Commissioner Blowing?
Well, they're not on consent also.
You open to consent?
I'm fine with that, yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Call the question. Application is approved four zero.
Okay, so, so come back in two weeks, nine o'clock in the morning.
All right, thank you so much.
And that completes your zoning part of the agenda, Mr. Vice Chair and Board. We do have one other business that will be conducted by our Planning Division regarding the Complan amendments. You've done a great job today.
All right. My name's Philip Westbrook with Cobb County Community Development Senior Planner, and I'm here to introduce you to other business item number one, which is our 2023 Conference Plan Amendments to the Cobb County Conference of Plan and Future Land Use Map. First of all, I want to thank you for allowing us this opportunity to piggyback on the zoning hearing, both the Planning Commission and the, and the Board of Commissioners. Typically, we conduct these hearings in January, but we have a fairly small caseload, so I didn't want to use a special meeting for just the small amount of cases that we have. Before I get into each case, I do want to kind of reiterate what the conference plan is. It's, and the associated future land use map. Basically, they're guidelines and a, a, the county's long-range growth and development strategy. They help guide future development. It is not a zoning, it does not impact zoning, does not change zoning, it is simply a guide to help make land use decisions when we come before the board as far as zoning cases. And with that, I'll tell you what, I think I will move through each of the cases. We've got five zoning decision cases and one commission proposal, our commissioner proposal. The five zoning decision cases go from May of October 2022 to October of 2022, and these are based on previous zoning actions in which the zoning was approved that didn't align with the future land use plan. And we bring these cases up to the board to provide you all with an opportunity to change the future land use to a more compatible use of the zoning that was granted, or you may decide, or at least in your board, recommend keeping it as it is. The commission proposals are proposals that come down from a commissioner to the Planning Division level. A lot of times, the constituents are, go through the commissioner, and it is vetted through the commissioner and brought down to the Planning Division level for consideration. So, like I said, we've got five zoning decisions and one commission proposal. And Chairman, if you don't mind, I'll just quickly describe, since we have five different zoning decisions, I think the best way of going through that process is, what I'll do is I'll read each zoning decision, and then you would ask if there's any opposition or discussion with the Planning Commission. And if there is opposition or discussion, then we'll just set that off to the side and then continue moving through the zoning decisions. And then all the ones that had no opposition, we'll vote on those as a group, and then we can continue with the zoning decisions that did have opposition and go through those one by one. And then, of course, with the commission proposal, there's only one, so no need for a, a special process there.
Okay.
So what I'll do is I'll, I'll start with ZD one dash four, and I think, oh, oh, I got it. Okay, so we got ZD dash one dash four is in Commission District Four and is based on zoning case Z twenty-seven from May of 2022, where the zoning was approved from GC and R twenty to CRC and R twenty for the purpose of a climate-controlled self-storage facility and a single-family residential lot at the rear of the property to be integrated into the adjacent neighborhood. The proposed change to the future land use is priority industrial area with subcategory of industrial compatible to priority industrial area with subcategory industrial compatible and low-density residential. The site is located on the northeast side of Mableton Parkway and on the southwest side of Cardell Circle, north of Honeycutt Road.
Any opposition or discussion on this particular item from Planning Commission?
All right. The next case, ZD two one, is in Commission District One and is based on zoning case Z twenty-nine from July of 2022, that changed the zoning from future commercial to R twenty for the purpose to permit property owner to build a garage at the existing single-family residence. The proposed change to the future land use is from community activity center to low-density residential. The site is located on the north side of Waltrip Circle, west of South Cobb Drive.
Any comments from Planning Commission? This is a public hearing?
Yes, this is a public hearing.
So is there anyone here who want to speak to this particular case? Hearing is seeing none, we'll continue.
All right. ZD three dash four is in Commission District Four and is based on zoning case Z fifty-three from August of 2022, that changed the zoning from GC to R fifteen for the purpose of two two-story single-family homes on point six-nine acres, resulting in a density of two-point-eight-nine units per acre. The proposed change to the future land use is from community activity center to medium-density residential. The site is located on the northwest side of Old Bankhead Highway, at the terminus of Ricky Lane, south of Veterans Memorial Highway.
All right. Any opposition? Any discussion from the Planning Commission? This is a public hearing, anyone here to speak on this case? All right, hearing is seeing none, we'll continue.
All right, ZD four dash two is in Commission District Two and is based on zoning case Z seventy-eight, which was initiated in 2021, and decided in August of 2022, the, the zoning changed from O and I and R twenty to O and I for the purpose of a school. The proposed change to the future land use is from medium-density residential to public institutional. The site is located east and north of Daniel Street, on the west side of Cooper Lake Road.
All right. Anyone here to speak on this particular case? Seeing none, any discussion from the Planning Commission? All right.
All right, and our last zoning decision case is ZD five dash four is in Commission District Four and is based on zoning case Z fifty-seven from October of 2022. The zoning changed from GC to NRC to continue the use of an existing convenience store. The proposed change to the future land use is from low-density residential to neighborhood activity center. The site is located on the east side of Hicks Road, on the south side of Grindstone Drive.
All right, anyone here to speak on this, this case? No one? Planning Commission?
Okay.
Please proceed.
I don't, I don't believe we had any opposition to any of the zoning decision cases, so if, if, I'll, it's up to you all to go through the process of recommending.
If I could, I do have a couple of questions.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, on this last one, five four, ZD five four. Currently, it's low-density residential, and it looks like across the street's low, low-density residential, and it looks like behind it is fairly low-density residential. Am I reading that right?
That is correct.
Okay, so the, the idea to change this to a, to a NAC is based on what?
It's based on the zoning that was changed, Z fifty-seven, that went from G, it was already zoned GC, so.
This is the gas, the gas station, basically?
Correct.
It's the gas station on Hicks Road.
Got it, okay. Let me try, try a second question, only, only arising out of my ignorance, that's ZD one four. I'm just a little confused about what a priority industrial area, low-density residential, IC, low-density residential exactly means. What, what are we trying to promote there?
Okay. First of all, I, there may be a little confusion in the, in the way it's written. The priority industrial area basically just notifies our, there is no special requirement, there are subcategories, industrial compatible. It is just a category that lets the community know that this area is an area for industrial use. We don't want to see encroachment from residential uses into a priority industrial area. Now, the low-density residential is not a subcategory, it's a, it's just like your typical low-density residential that is in, in West Cobb. The zoning on this was, um, the R twenty, the LD, the low-density residential portion was zoned to R twenty to sort of be a part of that neighborhood, adjacent neighborhood to the rear of the property. And the rest of it was climate-controlled, I'm not sure what the zoning was. Let's see here. CRC. And so what we did is just, it was already in a priority industrial area, we just kept it in a priority industrial area and changed the low-density residential portion of the property.
And by putting a priority industrial designation on a future land use, we're, we're not necessarily encouraging any HI-type activity there.
No. Well, it's, the subcategory is LI, or, I'm sorry, IC. LI is a zoning category, industrial compatible, which is not a heavy industrial, is not, it's not the, our industrial future land use.
All right, thank you.
So Philip, real quick, I know we've gone through the five zoning decisions, we've talked about voting on them as a block, is there any issue with us hearing that CP one and this voting on all six at one time?
Sure, I mean, yeah, we can do that, that's fine.
Okay.
So we'll move on to our commission proposal. And the commission proposal is CP one dash three and is located in District Three. The proposed, thank you, the proposed change is from medium-density residential to low-density residential. The site is located on the southeast side of Wade Green Road, north of Wooten Lake Road.
All right, is there anyone here in opposition to this? All right, there is one. We will.
So it just, excuse me, just opposition speaks, if you're for it, you don't speak?
You, any, you both can have an opportunity to speak to the.
I just, I.
You need to come to the mic and.
I thought my voice was loud enough, but I'll try to speak lower up here. Good morning, everyone. I received a, an email last night from Commissioner Burrell, and so I wanted to make sure I came.
Yeah, let's, let's get you sworn in and then make sure you start with your name.
I have to promise something. Okay, my name is Joseph Declametti, good morning. So, last year, there was a lot of time spent on this particular area, and the developer pulled out after a long time. I was not the main representative. We had delegated, I represent Chestnut Hill, which is a fairly large development in Commissioner Burrell's area. We had delegated responsibility to negotiate for us, to Andy Johnston, he did a great job. The developer eventually just pulled out due to the opposition. This particular area does back up to Chestnut Hill, and it actually would dump a lot of its storm water into Lake Indigo, which was the biggest concern for Chestnut Hill. There were lots of other concerns regarding traffic near the school, and how difficult it would be for other neighborhoods if those townhomes were installed in this area. The developer for the townhomes would drill. So I would imagine what Ms., Ms., Ms. Burrell is trying to do is change this from MDR to LDR to avoid this same property for being developed again, or proposed for townhomes. I'm absolutely in support of what she is proposing. This area would add more storm water into Lake Indigo, which is Chestnut Hill. It is also meant for the recreation of that community. We understand that it is primarily a stormwater function. We have issues with the amount of water that's being sent through that lake, the silt is building up, the flow over the dam and down to the further creek is becoming high velocity now, so we know that the silt is growing. So I am for her proposal primarily for Chestnut Hill and our concern about the lake that is for the county but not our property. And I'd like to suggest that I'm, I am an engineer and I have very strong support for Chestnut Hill for changing from MDR to LDR. Thank you.
My name is Jerry Devers. I'm the grandson of the people that owned the property since the forties. This property has been in the same family since forty-seven, and the biggest problem is every bit of this that's developed around here, there was two cars a day went up and down this road when I was born, only two cars, my dad and the mailman. And the biggest problem I have, they've been trying to sell it, and every time they sell it, they come down here, try to get a permit, it gets denied. But the problem is, when they put everything in, including the publics that adjoins it, when they. when they took the school across the road, took the property for the county, they, they just abused them, the whole family, because it is, was a family farm. This is the last piece of property around there, so now they've had to endure everything because even though all these subdivisions are in there, no one controls their kids. You leave anything outside, it gets stole, everybody walks on the property, and then on top of that, all the trash, you walk it, uh, Ms. Dance walked it, I'm sure she's seen all the trash from the public shopping center, they don't upkeep it. Finally, we quit doing it because you'd get fifteen garbage bags a week from it. And so in saying that, and now you're wanting us to just stay living there and not allow it to develop, because if it goes down to what they're suggesting, you're never going to sell it. And then on top of that, they've had to endure everything that's went on, and you've allowed everything else, because they opposed everything, the shopping center, the subdivisions, because they wanted the larger estate lots to come in, but they didn't do that, they went ahead and pushed the smaller subdivisions. So it's sort of ironic, the people that live there that helped develop everything, and on top of that, they even allowed them to move Wade Green Road onto their property to start with. And so it's sort of ironic, if you look at the property, when they put the shopping center in initially, in order to even get them to even halfway consider it, they told them, well, because it has all this road frontage and not anything else, it would be considered for commercial. They don't even allow them to put townhomes on it. I've come down here and fought, and they pull out because they can't make any money on it and pay what it's really worth for the kind of road frontage it has on a road with that kind of traffic. And I've got news for you, you know, they said, the last subdivision that was trying to do it, they said that the issue was the school. Well, guess what? The county decided to put the school there, they knew what kind of traffic that road had on it, so how is another few townhomes going to change that? It wouldn't have, but yet they allowed that to stop it. So at some point, somebody needs to be responsible for allowing everything to build up around it to make it to where you don't have anything available, and you're just stuck with something. They've been trying to get rid, they're older, they don't want to be there. Everyone in these subdivisions that have issues with it going on, that oppose this, their kids, their grandkids and them, they walk on the property, they steal stuff, they take stuff, they cut through there to go to the store.
Mr. Chairman.
It's like a constant opinion problem. I, I don't understand it, I oppose, I, it needs to go what they had it suggested, because they said initially it was going commercial.
All right, thank you, sir. It's back to the board for any discussions or comments or questions for staff.
I have a question for the gentleman who just spoke, if I'm allowed to.
Sure.
I'll just want to, Mr. Devers. Can, can you give us a thumbnail sketch of the history of what use has been made of this triangle and whether your family owned any other property in the area ever?
Well, they owned the whole piece of property there and even owned up where the corner, where the racetrack is, all that was part of the parcel and a subdivision on the other side there, and they did a little bit off just over time.
So, so what we're seeing right here that says C A C below it, you're, you're saying your family owned that at one point as well?
I can't see.
What's, the shopping center in red, just south?
No, it, what I'm referring to, where the school is directly across the street.
Your family used to own that?
Yes.
Okay.
Then also where the red is, is directly across the street.
Your family owned that?
But not, it wasn't turned into that, it was residential, it was family homes.
Okay.
And then also up to the corner where the, uh, the Q T is, and there's a, there's a, actually a subdivision right in behind that red that's on the corner there.
All right.
It's Cindy Lane.
So how long ago did your family sell or transfer the property that is shown here as C A C property across the street?
I can't see what C S C is.
The red, it's in red.
Oh, the red? Hmm. Forty-five, fifty years ago, in the seventies.
Okay.
Because they've owned it since forty-seven.
All right, so.
And, and then it was sold to people for homes, it was not, it didn't go commercial. It was somewhat relatives or friends of the family that had just built homes.
Okay, so then this piece, this triangle, since the seventies, what use has been made of this property?
Just, they've lived on it, because.
One house?
I'm sorry?
One house, single family?
No, there was, there was initially three, now there's two.
Okay.
There's two houses on the complete piece of property now.
Okay. One was torn down?
Yes, one of my grandfather's house, because it had got, nobody wanted to live in it because of it being a, their parents and everything else, so unfortunately, nobody really upkept it, and it got dilapidated.
That's all my questions, thank you.
All right, any other questions regarding this case?
I've got a question, and I apologize, the first gentleman spoke, I know you'd said your name, but I forgot, I did not catch it, so just wanted. If you can, that'd be great, yes, please.
My last name means of Flanders, the last name is DiClemente, D I C L E M E N T E, Joseph DiClemente.
Got it, great, thank you, thank you, Mr. DiClemente.
Is that all?
No, that, that, man, that would've been the easiest question ever, right? Only, only question I had, it was just, um, for the existing, as you, given your background, you're aware of the, kind of, what is permitted as of right on this site, the.
I'm sorry, didn't, say that again, please.
You were, uh, you were aware of, when this case came through, um, what could be built as of right on this site and the number of units that could be built there?
Oh, there was, I mean, I was involved with Mr. Johnston, he, he represented a community closer to it, I'm in Chestnut Hill, but you're asking me, do I know what was being proposed?
Yeah, so there was a.
There was a town.
Resoning, and then there was something that could be built just as of right with the existing zoning, the number of units that could, I don't remember.
The developer was proposing to build townhomes, significant number of townhomes in this particular space.
I guess the reason why I'm asking is this, I'm just trying to think through if, if a certain number of units that are less than that number of townhomes, but still more than two, can be built here.
Oh, I.
And I just want to help understand, you know, some of the impacts you talked about on lake, on, on, on the lake, do those impacts in your mind go away if it just gets built as of right with, with what's allowed there? And I forget the exact number of how many units are available there.
I, I believe that all of us, we don't oppose development, what we were really strong in opposing was, in our opinion, what was an overdevelopment of that land, so I believe Mr. Johnston, who was representing all three communities, did try to negotiate with the developer to put less units on that land. But apparently, the shape of the land is such that you would not be able to get very many units and still in that L D R, because there's a lot of angles and depths and slopes. So apparently, the developer wanted to put townhomes closer to the road, and many of them, such that the amount of cars and traffic coming from that development would impact the traffic flow on Wade Green. That was the biggest concern of that particular neighborhood. My neighborhood, Chestnut Hill, which is a six-hundred-and-nineteen-home community, is not feeling the impact of that traffic directly every day, but perhaps traveling home or to work or from work. But our major concern was the amount of stormwater increase that would come into Lake Indigo, it is a county stormwater system. But it, we already feel that that lake is overstressed, you, it's, you know, it's, by definition, as an engineer, it is a stormwater system, so it is meant to be what it is, to collect water and debris, but it is gone from an open lake over the years, and the original covenant agreements, in my opinion, with the county, was that there was supposed to be some consideration given for the recreational use of that lake, that has diminished greatly. Several homes on that lake for Chestnut Hill is now marshland, it has become marshland, and they're not, they can't even access their docks, some of which should have been permitted, and they weren't. So I only moved in twenty-three years ago. But our concern is that that lake is, has an overdemand of stormwater, and you can see it visually, you don't have to measure it.
Thank you. Just, I think, trying to get to where David's trying to go with this, does the staff know what the current zoning is on the property?
It's R twenty. R twenty.
It's R twenty.
It is currently zoned R twenty.
And generally, do how many lots would?
I looked at, it's roughly around eight and a half acres, so like fifteen, sixteen units?
Okay, all right, is that where you're trying to go?
Yeah, I was just trying to understand what's, um, is there, if you can build without any zoning, fifteen, sixteen units, does that impact or address the stormwater issue? And, and certainly, that, that was just my, my question on that, but, look, if, if the, if we're open to it, Mr. Chairman, that, um, Mr. Devers, welcome any response that he has to, to the prior comments made by Mr. DiClemente?
Sure.
I'm not trying to be hard to get along with here, but you got to look, when they built this public shopping center, the commissioners that were in charge at that time, in order even let my grandfather deal with any of that, he even allowed them to move Wade Green Road over onto his property to put it where it's at now, okay? Wade Green Road used not even be there, not where it's at, it was farther over, so he allowed them to change the direction to get it to where it was at. They didn't pay him, they didn't do anything. Well, then when they come in with the Publix, he didn't want all the wash coming through his property, because he farmed it. Well, bottom line is, they did, it destroyed half of his farmland. But they said, well, not a problem, because the commissioners then said, well, you will make up for it, because we're going to allow you to get it commercial. Well, now you don't even want it to go resident, high-residential, and it's even in the zoning. Who wants to live on a road like Wade Green Road in a commercial? I mean, a real subdivision, would you prefer to live on a road that's that kind of traffic? Very few people would. So with, nothing but road frontage, that property is not really set up for that. Not only that, the lay of the property, and they also noted that when the commissioners at the time they were putting the shopping center in and Parkwood Commons, which is directly behind there, that that was up there, it's all road frontage, there's not a whole lot of property there other than the road frontage, and they talked about then, said we will set that up as a strip shopping center. I remember the commissioners talking to my grandfather, because he was upset about it, because he didn't even want the shopping center in there, and that was part of the, well, you'll make your money back later, well, now, y'all don't even want, nobody to sell it, and the family can't even get rid of it because everything gets done. The last gentleman wanted to put the condominiums in there or the townhomes, that's not that many townhomes on a place like that compared to what's allowed everywhere, especially on a road that's that busy, it's not that many people, but yet it's allowed for everywhere else, but yet, who wants to really live next to a shopping center? So you have to have something, and you can't go from just straight residential to shopping center, you have to have a gradual decrease to a general rule, and that's what they've had proposed, but yet it didn't go any farther. So at some point, somebody has to make decisions, and when they do, it affects everybody, but at the same time, it's not right to always keep taking away from the same people, because they condemned and took the property to put the school. Not only did they do that, when they did that, when my grandfather passed away, the county decided to have the engineers take over two acres, didn't even pay them for it, so it's like a, just concave and just keeps going downhill. So the family is getting a little frustrated with the whole thing that's going on, and here you are, just keep going down, and you put restrictions on all this, well, nobody put restrictions on any of the other people around there, who keeps all the people from the subdivisions from walking off with everything? You know how many things have gotten stolen off that property from the kids in the subdivision? And not only that, some of the adults.
Thank you, sir. All right.
Thank you.
Any more, any more comments? I think, I think we've heard, thank you, appreciate it, we're going to continue. Any questions of staff at this point in time? Okay, we had talked about voting on these as a block, Chair will entertain a motion unless there are other questions regarding the zoning decisions, Com Plan Amendments, and the Commission, um, Conference or Plan Amendment as well.
Just, for the point of just discussion, just want to, just put the numbers to this proposal, this last one, this is, amounts to, and the V L D R, I'm sorry, the low-density residential, that amounts to twenty-two units that this could support, is that correct?
I've got eight-point-five acres, with, um, roughly, what, twenty thousand, that's two units per acre?
It'd be about fifteen lots.
Yeah, so.
Fifteen lots?
Yeah.
Okay, because I know there was some non-useable area in this, okay, so fifteen lots.
It calculates out to be about sixteen-point-eight, but when you start looking at, right, road frontage and detention and all that, you're looking at fifteen lots, if not less.
Okay, so that's roughly in the ballpark of what's allowed with existing zoning?
Correct.
Okay, got it, all right, just wanted to make sure I was doing the math right on that, thank you.
Is it still the pleasure of the board to vote on all of these as a block? Do we want to separate out the zoning decisions from the, the CP Plan Amendment?
I think let's, let's do that, I'd like to recommend that we move forward on the zoning decisions, ZD one, four, I'm sorry, ZD one dash four, ZD two dash one, ZD three dash four, ZD four dash two, and ZD five dash four, recommend approval to the Board of Commissioners as presented.
Yes, you're making that motion?
I'll.
Second?
Yeah.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
We have a motion, and then a second, any discussion? Call a question. All right, those, those cases are approved or recommendations will move forward to the board for their February twenty-first meeting, and is there some additional discussion on CP one-dash-three?
If I may, just briefly, I, we've run into this before, where folks have had a taking, and it seems like, um, folks then come to us and, and ask for consideration because something wasn't addressed at the time of the taking, and my, my public service announcement would be that when, when folks are giving up property to the county, that they get their just compensation or seek, or hire counsel and seek to get it, that, that, that we not address this ten, twenty, or fifty years after the fact, because it's, it's a little hard to relive that history.
Is there a motion, one way or the other, or additional comments?
I'll submit, I'll make a motion, I move to approve CP one-dash-three, or recommend it for approval to the B O C.
Second?
You have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Call a question? All right, CP one, three is recommended for approval from Board of Commissioners.
Oh, okay, thank you, I was just having a hard time hearing.
Sorry.
Thank you very much, and just to let the audience know that this, the second public hearing of our two thousand and twenty-three Conference Plan Amendments will be February twenty-first, along with the B O C zoning hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our next item is to approve our minutes for the Planning Commission, December sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. Chair will entertain a motion.
Load approved.
I'll take it, move to approve the December sixth, uh, Planning Commission meeting minutes.
All right, we have a motion and a second, any discussion? Call a question? Motion approves, four-zero. We have minutes for the special call, meeting and work session, January thirtieth, for the Planning Commission. Vice Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
The motion?
Second.
And a second? Any discussion? Call a question? Motion is approved, four-zero. And a second. Any discussion? Call a question. Motion is approved four zero. And then lastly, um, I think it's been our custom to, um, consider, um, officers for the planning commission at our first meeting in, of the year. Uh, obviously, this is our first meeting of the year. Um, Chairman Walt is still, is currently the chair. I'm the vice chair. We serve all, obviously, at y'all's pleasure. Any, are there any nominations or recommended changes or others that are interested?
Well, we discussed at our previous meeting that we were very satisfied with the composition of the board and the jobs being performed by the chair and the vice chair. So with that, I would say congratulations to you. As we said to the chair at our, at our other meeting, we didn't think that there was a need to take it up unless somebody has a different recollection.
I'll, I'll treat that as a motion and second it, provided that you don't object.
I, thank you. I do not object. I do not object. All right. We have a motion and a second. Or do we have a second? I'm sorry. Did we get a second?
Yes. I'm sorry. Yes.
A motion and a second.
Second.
Yeah. Call a question. Uh, motion is approved four zero. That concludes our meeting for February seventh, twenty twenty-three. Thank you all.